Again, coming back from closed session. We are going to start with our pledge of allegiance. And with that, I would like to call upon Principal Billingsley to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're going to do roll call. Trustee Benegas. Trustee Wong.
Present.
Trustee Pazanti.
Present.
Trustee Kirby Gonzalez.
Present.
And I too am present. We're announcing the actions that taken place in our closed session. Okay. Well, we are going to go back to closed session as we only were able to discuss E1. So we will be reconvening for E2 and E3. So at this time. So I have approval of the agenda.
I'd like to ask to make one change to the approval of the agenda. So in item J for communications and celebrations, if we could just move item 1 and make that the last item in that area to allow us to honor all of those who are here that we are looking forward to celebrate and be able to do that first and then come back for our attendance progress sharing.
Okay. Do you have a motion to move?
I move.
I second.
Moved by trustee Wong, second by trustee Benegas. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I too say aye. All right. Make that change. So with that being said, we will go ahead and start with J2, recognition of district community important dates and observance in December 2023. This is by Yorgos Pazanti, Executive Director of Communications. I know I butchered your name, I'm sorry. I'm used to Yorgos.
It is okay. That's not the test today, so. But if anyone does want to learn conversational Greek, I'm happy to give lessons at night and on the weekend. So just let me know. As is customary, each month this school year, we have been providing an overview. If you can go to the next slide, please. We've been providing an overview of important dates and recognitions that occur throughout the school year. It's an opportunity for us to highlight these particular occasions and then make everyone aware in the community and in the audience as these opportunities are also coming up. If you could go on the next slide. So this is a laundry list of things that are kind of coming up in December, which a lot of us are already familiar with. We've kind of extended that into January just because the very next regularly scheduled board meeting after this one is January 25th. So there will be a decent amount of time gap between this meeting and the next. So we wanted to make sure that everyone is aware of what's coming up. I think what everyone is most excited about is the winter recess, which you can see highlighted at the very top. And those are the important dates that we want to share. Want to point out that Washington Middle College High School has a different calendar because they follow the Sex City College calendar. And our first day back for instruction is January 8th. Next slide, please. On December 2nd, it was the Callings Cares Holiday Giveaway Event hosted over here at the Teen Center on Merkley Avenue, just down the street from the district office. Again, we just want to say thank you to the Callings Center, all of our staff, student services, support services, outreach team from WUSD that were in attendance. They're really a big part of this particular event in partnership with all the other community organizations. It's a great opportunity for our district to be involved in impacting families and students this particular time of year as well. On the next slide, please. The annual shop with a cop was on December 9th. Again, it's another great community opportunity this time of year with the holiday season coming up. A lot of community organizations, it's not just the West Sacramento Police Department, but again, you can see pictured there, a lot of our outreach team from the Washington Unified School District are present and again, making an impact, working together with our community partners to support students and families this time of year. Next slide, please. I'm going to hand it over to my colleague June Flores, who's going to highlight the first ever district-wide Kwanzaa celebration event that occurred just this Tuesday on December 12th at River City High School. So June, if you could join me at the podium, then you're there. Thank you.
Learn this. You guys are friendly to us littles. Good evening, Dr. Hildreth, President Coffey, Board members, and the entire WUSD family. I am honored to share highlights about the first WUSD district-wide Kwanzaa celebration which took place December 12th. Kwanzaa is an annual celebration of African-American culture. It was created in 1966 based on African harvest festival traditions from various parts of West and Southeastern Africa. There are seven powerful Kwanzaa principles that help us all to continue to build and maintain unified and empowered communities. As you see on the screen, Yorgos designed these amazing bookmarks with the seven principles on them. The football team at the end of this presentation will be passing out those bookmarks to everybody here and all of the board members. Thank you, Yorgos, for creating that. The first Kwanzaa celebration took place last year at River City High School. It was only for the River City High School community, and there were about 40 adults and students present. This year, the River City Leadership Students and BSU Students wanted to open up the celebration to the entire community. As you know, we have over 7,600 students, so that was not feasible to do. So we were not sure we would be able to accommodate everybody, so a more reasonable goal was to invite all students and families in our district that identify as Black or African-American. The goal became to have Black students and families experience a meaningful and engaging celebration where their cultural identity was valued, where they felt seen, and where their culture was honored. We did just that. So proud to be WUSD. We had 130 students, families, and staff members attend the event. We had engaging African drumming and dancing presentations where the community joined in and danced together, and the students actually played the drums while we danced. We had a soul food meal where we broke bread together. We had student performances. We had books written by African-American authors that were gifted to the children that attended. And we had an interactive Kwanzaa activity co-led by Dr. Hildreth herself. Students showcased their artwork, and we raffled off artwork where student artists actually made money. This entire event was organized and executed by River City High School Leadership Students and BSU Students, who felt empowered by the outpouring of support. Some of that support were the district funds for the food, books, and performers, United Way giving away pies and drinks, the staff that attended and the board members, the mayor, city council members, and even state BSU administrators. Do you want to go ahead and hand out? So the football players are going to go ahead and hand out all of the bookmarks. And I just want to thank you for your time. And I just want to tell you that it felt really, really beautiful to be able to be a part of such a beautiful event. Thank you. Thank you for supporting it.
Okay, as those are all getting passed out. Beautiful. Wish I would have been there, celebrating a different celebration that day as my little guy. But I was there in spirit. So J3, recognition of River City High School Fall Sports. Brittany Billingsley, Principal at River City High School.
Hi. River City is in the house tonight, not just with our athletics, but with our teachers as well. This is a beautiful sight to see outside of the school wall. So everybody, welcome, welcome. Board President Coffey and Trustee Superintendent Hildreth and our cabinet. We are very excited tonight to celebrate our fall sports. Before Assistant Principal Dornan takes the mic, I just want to take a moment and give a special highlight to the coaches that are in the room. Coaches, if you'd stand up, please. As.
General.
As all of you know, they don't get paid anything to do what they do. And they pour their hearts and their souls into our students and ensure that they are not just connected on the field, in the pool, on the court, but that they are connected in the classroom. And they monitor their students and they care for them deeply. And I am grateful for each and every one of them because they truly help us to increase the passion and connectedness for our scholar athletes. So coaches, thank you so much for being here. Parents, I also would like you to stand up, please, parents of our athletes. Since they could walk, they have been taking these scholar athletes to and from all of their practices and sporting events, and they continue to do so. And they are huge supports of our school. And I am grateful to partnering with the parents and for all that you do, making meals for all the teams before and dinners before their games. So parents, you are amazing, and we are grateful to you as well. So now we are going to celebrate our students, and I'm going to hand it off to Assistant Principal Dornan.
Thank you. Thank you so much for letting us be here and letting us celebrate these kids. Then, next slide, please. What I wanted to start off with is, I know last time that we met, there was some people wanting to see kind of the breakdown of what a scholar athlete looks like for each of the different, the fall, the winter, and the spring. So we set this up together, so I took a look at what we had for this past season. And I want to say that our average GPA was 3.46 for our athletes. So that is. And I want to tell you that when we did the yearly one last year, and I put it forth to you guys, it was a 3.21, so that is a major jump. So I'm very proud of our scholar athletes on that one. 83% of them maintain a 3.0 or higher. So that is phenomenal. We had 308 total athletes for just the fall sports. Of those, we had 171 male, 137 female. 98 of them are two-sport athletes, which means at some point in time, not counting ninth graders, they are playing more than just one sport. They are involving themselves in two. We have 24 three-sport athletes, and we all know that it's one of my areas of focus. I want to make sure everybody has some kind of investment in themselves and the school and feels a way to connect. One of the things that we do for each of the sports is that we have a big mandatory parent coaching and athlete meeting. And one of the things that we go over is our rise expectations for athletics. And so that's part of what the portrait of a scholar athlete looks like. And I can tell you this year, it's something that I really feel down into my core when I go out there and I look at these students walking around on our campus. First one is respectful. That's of the game, fams, family, coaches, opposing team, our team, and ourselves. So we respect all of those. We are inclusive. We honor the opposing team, our teammates, coaches, yourself, always. We are safe. That means we play with the highest level of sportsmanship in all athletic contests and practice. And then we are engaged. We always keep our head in the game. We are coachable. We attend all practices and games with the attitude of achievement. And our coaching staff, like Ms. Billingsley said, embodies this for us. They walk that walk, they talk that talk. We reflect what we expect. So I could not be prouder of the people that I work with. So with that said, next slide. All right, I'd like to start with our water polo team, our all-league players this year. As you can see, it's quite the extensive list. I'd like to point out, though, this is one of the first times I've seen that we sweep the MVP. So we do both the male and female. And I think that is an amazing achievement, a testament to their high level of play and their coaching staff as well. So, good job, guys. When I call your names, please come up here. And Ms. Billingsley will be handing you your certificate. And coaches, if you guys come up here, I'd like to get a picture. All right, Esteban Rivera. Daniel Diaz. Jamison Hendricks. Joshua Stone. Zachary Taylor Hunt. Sidney Isberg. Lauren Conklin. Avery Ainsworth. Olivia Dawes. Amelia Blanc. And Reagan Isberg. So when you look up here, I want you to understand that all league is voted on by all of the coaches in the league. So it's not just our coach, their opinion, our coaching staff and their opinions. So you have everybody that's seen all of these individuals play and put their heart out when they engage in their sport. So I'd like to invite coaches up here real quick. We'll take a little picture.
Do we have the trustees also join us on the floor?
Or.
Yeah, let's have all the students move to the very front.
Yeah. I'm going to get away.
Yes, I will.
All right, everyone, face in my direction. So on three. One, two, three. Aaron.
I like the. Okay, next slide, please. All right, we have football all-league. All-league first team, Bryce Sabatki. Justice Spencer. All-league second team, Jeremiah Dupuy. Amari Swilling. Honorable mention, Matt Guyvet. And Sebastian Perez.
Got a picture?
Yeah. Yeah, probably wise.
All right, everyone, face to me when you get up there. All right, on three. One, two, three. And trustees, please remain on the floor. We have two more groups.
Yep, two more groups. Next slide, please. Yeah, she's not here, though. So I'll just, I'm going to announce. And I'd like to honor Hannah. She is currently playing a game on the soccer field against Kennedy, so. Next slide, please. All right, girls volleyball all-league. I have Anika Scholastico. And Paige Moynier. Next slide. All right, we have girls tennis all-league. I have Juliana Formacion. Emily Nguyen. And honorable mention, Allison Uche.
All right, on three. One.
Next slide, please. So I just wanted to do a couple cheerleading celebrations. They, we didn't have, they don't do the all-league, but I didn't want to exclude them on this one. And I just wanted to kind of highlight that they hosted a cheer camp for the Bears, West Sac Bears youth cheerleaders. They participated in the Safe Trunk or Treat event. They did the West Sac PD K9, 5K event, and they also did the West Sacramento Veterans Day Parade. So.
All right, so thank you for everybody coming out tonight. We appreciate you, and we will be back in the winter for winter sports.
Well, that was amazing, and look at all of the athletes go, and our crowd, too. But that's okay. But that's okay. That was a great celebration. So we are now J4, recognition of Washington Unified School District Middle School Leadership Development Day by June Marie Flores, Student Leadership and Empowerment Coordinator. Go ahead and take the podium.
Thank you. With the slides, yeah? Okay. Good evening once again, Dr. Hildreth, President Coffey, Board members, and the entire WUSD family. Slide number two. I am honored to talk about the first WUSD district-wide Leadership Development Day. It was a powerful day that aligns to our strategic plan in the following ways. Please take a look at the screen. On November 13th, 2023, 200 middle school and high school students across the district came together under Riverbank's roof for a full day of collaboration. Each student was given training to strengthen their own leadership skills. Next slide, please. Castle was established in 1996. The Leadership Development Day was led by a master trainer with over 10,000 hours of leadership training. The day started bright and early with 26 high school students arriving at 7:00 a.m. for specialized training to be facilitators. Their job, once the Leadership Development Day started, was to facilitate a small group for the entire day through experiential learning activities, that is, learning by doing, followed by student reflection. Next slide, please. Here is a picture of our student leaders across the WUSD campuses, united with one goal, to discover and refine their leadership skills so that they can use them effectively in our schools and our communities. Next slide, please. For the day, there was a push towards growth. The goal was that each student would grow their leadership skills depending on where they were at. So for high school students, they learned how to be facilitators because they've been in that leadership role for like three or four years. For Riverbank students, they learned how to host an event. They learned how to greet and create a positive, unifying culture in a district that often is divided between the North and the South. And all participants grew individually. An example of this was pushing through the uncomfortable feelings that many of them felt initially. I even had some students tell me they felt anxiety in the beginning of the conference. But those same students, by the end of the conference, were teaching us all how to do the magarena in the middle of the dance floor. Next slide, please. Another goal was to connect with peers across the district. The groups were intentionally mixed. The pre-planning, I shared that many times in this district, there's a North versus South mentality. And so this Leadership Development Day was to maximize that we had students from across the district together. And the message that was taught was, you are not my enemy. Maybe you're my competitor, and I'm going to smash you on the soccer field, but that's on the field or that's on the court. But in this district, when it comes to leadership and changing school culture, you are my resource. You are a connection, you are an ally, and together, unified, we can improve school culture everywhere. Next slide, please. Another goal was to build and succeed as a team. This is some of our students getting ready for their fashion show. All they had was tape and construction paper. But as a team, they built a theme, a costume, and they mastered a red carpet walk. I can tell you, by the time we got to the fashion show, I have never seen so many students yelling and screaming and cheering on their peers. The slightest flex of a muscle from someone doing their red carpet walk got haulers. And they really did focus on the next goal, which is lift each other up. And they encouraged one another, no matter which campus they were from. Next slide. This is a picture of all of them dressed in their themes. We have Ariel dressed in there, we have a Christmas tree. I mean, you take your pick. Next slide, please. I do want to take some time to honor the heroes that do the work behind the scenes to equip our students with leadership skills. These are our leadership teachers. The leadership teachers that pour into our students and work to improve our school culture every day. And it wouldn't be a presentation for me if I didn't give some special thanks. So a special thanks to Mr. Wong, the Riverbank Leadership Team, for hosting us so well, for pushing themselves out of their comfort zone, and for creating a very unifying atmosphere. Huge thank you to Food Services, who went above and beyond with our boxed lunches to the point that students emailed me and asked where was our lunch catered from. To the district for the funding and for the belief that kids come first and that we should invest in them. So proud to be WUSD. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Thank you. And now we will go to. And now we will go to, which was originally J1, which is now J4. Recognition of District-wide Attendance Progress, Yorgos. I ain't gonna say your last name. Clearly, I butchered it the first time. I'm working on it.
Not even gonna try.
Not even try.
Thank you. Good evening, trustees, once again. I'd like to also introduce my colleague Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services, Autry Streak. She will be joining me for this presentation. All right, I'm gonna try to use the clicker. Let's see. Think it's up to go forward, down to go forward. There we go. Okay, in the essence of keeping pace with tonight's agenda, I'm gonna move forward. Attendance is one of those things, as obvious as it might sound, we do want to point out that it's not just something that's limited to the classroom and classroom performance. It impacts everyone in our school district, adults, employees, and all facets of the organization, and that's why we've highlighted everything in terms of the alignment to the strategic plan. Tonight, we're gonna highlight some key actions that we've taken over the last couple of years to really strengthen our engagement with our school community in terms of highlighting attendance awareness. We're gonna share some real-time current data for this current school year and then talk about next steps. So some of the key actions include the creation of a unique campaign for Washington Unified. So for the last two years, we've built a campaign around our school themed with our artwork, our visual aids, all of that. You won't see this particular content and material anywhere else in any other school district. This is unique to Washington Unified. The reason we did that is because we wanted to be at the forefront of celebrating our students, our staff, everyone in our community through specific events like school rallies, highlighting video testimonials where we bring in the voices of the individuals in our classrooms and in our schools, and then share that through various platforms in terms of public announcements. In terms of amplification, what we mean by that is it's not just limited to one day, one week, or one month. Specifically, September is Attendance Awareness Month, as we all know, and there's a lot that we do each week to highlight attendance awareness. We've been making a very concentrated effort this year to highlight attendance awareness each and every month of the school year. And specifically around the holidays, when we know it's easier to take a particular day off after a long weekend or after a holiday break, we want to emphasize and encourage our community to stay motivated, to keep wanting to show up, as easy as it might be. It severely impacts academic performance and the performance and the impact in terms of the school climate as well. So I'm gonna briefly highlight some of these visuals. I know you've seen some of these probably on our social media platforms and online as well. Again, this is just some of the artwork and the design that's captured specifically for Washington Unified. You'll see in other school districts, really across the country, there are some vendors that work with school districts to provide a very packaged sort of artwork messaging and all that. These are all unique to us, not just by design, but also in the fact that they pull language specifically from our strategic plan to highlight that the plan is here to also help strengthen attendance awareness and a lot of other things that are also involved in the school world on a daily basis. We're not gonna play these, but these are just some videos that are available to see for the public to see. Again, we talked about featuring in video testimonials the individuals within our community and in our schools. On the right-hand side, they're more like motion graphics that speak to certain things in our strategic plan. And the larger screen in the middle is actually a highlight video reel from Riverbank School that we put together earlier this school year. All of these are available on our social media platforms and on the district's YouTube page, so I encourage everyone to go watch those when they have a little bit more time. Sorry, it's clicking through all of them. I'll pass it over. One thing that we did differently this year, again, is that ongoing amplification piece and that celebration of our individual schools when they are making great progress. Because it's not about perfect attendance, it's about consistent attendance and really having excellent attendance throughout the duration of an entire school year. I'll let Autry take over.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. So as my colleague has pointed out, we've put some concerted efforts behind improving student attendance, and we're starting to see some positive results as a direct result of some of our efforts. So just first to point out, at the end of every school month, we've tried to identify schools that have demonstrated progress in either the reduction in chronic absenteeism or an increase in daily attendance rate. And so so far this year, we've been able to celebrate Riverbank, Elkhorn, Southport, and Yolo. They've, all of those schools have shown marked improvement in student attendance. And our newest addition to that list is Westmore Oaks, and we will be celebrating them with their banner and a rally next school week, next week. So congratulations to our schools that we've already been able to highlight. Mario, next slide, please.
I do want to highlight briefly just on the previous slide. So this graphic, we have actually designed this in a three-foot-by-six-foot vinyl banner. So when we do go out to those school sites to celebrate our schools, there's actually those rallies that are hosts of the school-wide assemblies, and these banners are presented to those schools, and then they're able to display them on their campus for the next month or two, just to show that they also take pride in what they've accomplished together. So this next piece, these next couple slides are just some visual examples of something that no one has seen yet in our school district. So when we're talking about doing unique amplification throughout the remainder of the year, these are actually posters that have been designed specifically borrowing on our kind of branded theme and package of content in Washington Unified. And you'll see a different, whoops, that's the same one. Well, there's another set of three that is also unique. It's not identical. But again, it borrows on the fact that we have unique messaging, unique content here in Washington Unified, and we're using that to do a lot of the talking for us in terms of providing inspiration and motivation for our community to want to show up every day and be ready to make an impact. So what we're gonna do with these posters is put them into production over the next couple of weeks. And as we come back from the winter recess, that we'll have them delivered all of our school sites. They'll have a package of about 10 to 15 of each, and that allows them to put them and display them throughout their campuses as well, just to provide inspirational messaging throughout the campus as you're walking the hallways. So it's something that our students can then see and feel when they're walking around the campus as well. And with that, I'm gonna pass it back over to Assistant Superintendent Streak to talk about data.
So we'll close out just with some highlights from the data. We've set out with some pretty ambitious attendance improvement goals. Our goal for 2023-2024 is actually 93.6%, and we are already at 93.1%. So that's our daily attendance rate. Next slide, please. And on the next slides, you'll see the data broken out by school sites. So on the left, you see our elementary students represented for the first 67 days of this school year, and on the right, you see our middle schoolers represented, and then at the bottom, our three secondary schools. And so you see that there's a plus sign in front of most of them. We see a couple of schools that are being really strategic about targeting exactly which grade levels, which students need a little bit of additional support with barriers to come into school on a daily basis. But for the most part, as you can see, the overwhelming majority of our schools are showing significant increase in student attendance. Next slide, please. And then here's some numbers to show, and this is a data point that we want to see negatives, right? We want to see a decrease, and we see significant decreases in our chronic absenteeism. And just a reminder, that means that you've been absent for more, 10% or more of the school year so far. So we're seeing significant decrease there, with the exception of two of our schools where we are providing some additional supports. But I do want to call out that, obviously, like Yorgos mentioned before, it really is a team effort. It's just the two of us standing at the podium, but Dr. Burns, our Director of Student Services, has really been working with the youth outreach specialists, school site leadership teams, our social workers, really the whole WUSD staff team to really put a lot of attention and effort around making sure our kids come to school every day and removing any barriers that are not allowing them to do that. So I just wanted to make sure we called that out. In this time of introspection, reflection, and celebration, we are very grateful for all of the efforts that have gone into this significant improvement. Thank you.
I would be remiss also if I didn't mention tomorrow is going to be the statewide public release of the California Schools Dashboard. So this is just a heads up that the data that you're looking at this evening in this presentation, that you just saw this evening in this presentation, is real-time data. It's this current school year that we're in. The data that you'll see released tomorrow from the California Department of Education is basically a year old, and that's just how the system works for reporting and collecting data.
Just one more note on that. The data that we looked at tonight is as of November 30th, which was the 67th day of school. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey. And now time for our association reports. First is WSTA.
Jenna Yorgos, I'm excited to see your kids in person. I've seen pictures. I always forget when you guys play musical chairs, and then I'm, so all my, I have the wrong names here, so. Good evening, President Coffey, is that right? And Vice President, raise your hand. Pizzotti and Clerk. Kirby Gonzalez. And Trustee Wong. I want to make sure I say your name right this time. Vinegas, because I've said it wrong so many times. And good evening, Superintendent Hildreth. First of all, I want to take a second to celebrate all of our student athletes. I'm always amazed by student athletes, but even more amazed when you see the numbers they're keeping up with their academics. And we all know that there's a correlation between academic success and physical activity, and so celebrate that here in West Sacramento. I have notes on my phone and on my computer because I couldn't get on the Wi-Fi. I guess they changed the password. I wanted to, I wanted to celebrate HR for the relationships that they're building. I've had really good interactions with HR, and I'd like to encourage strategies to fill the vacant HR manager position so that we can streamline some processes, including investigations. They're moving pretty slow, but there's a capacity issue, and so it's really important that our qualified teachers are in the classroom with kids. And we understand that investigations have to incur, that personnel issues are very important to our work, but we want to make sure that we can do it promptly so that we can have kids with qualified teachers and not substitutes. Sorry, Face ID. Face ID didn't work. I also want to take a second, and this doesn't necessarily have to do with our students, but I want to celebrate that WSTA and CSEA are continuing to enjoy relations with each other. I'm gonna make sure I get all their names right, because I always say President Gendara's name wrong. We have, we have been working together, we've been planning together, we see each other as colleagues. This HR department and this cabinet has never done this, but in the past, at times, we've been manipulated and pitted against each other, and that will never, ever happen again. So, and we had our holiday Christmas party together this year, and it was a blast, partying with bus drivers and teachers and therapists, so good times had by all. On another note, I wanted to talk a little bit about, I think this district is doing a really good job selecting programs lately. There's some really great things out there. We had an assembly today from Sammy Circuit at Bridgeway Island, and I can't tell you how excited the kids were, jumping up and down. And some of them, I was watching them, and I'm like, oh, boy, like, here we go again, you know, a bunch of rah-rah. But the kids actually knew what he was gonna say before he said it, which means they're watching it in their classrooms and they're watching it at home. I'd like to see more of those connections made, because when we spend money on programs, we need to evaluate to make sure that they're actually working. One of the things that you know about teachers is we do summative assessment, where we look at something after we've done it to see if the student succeeded. But the most important assessment we do is formative assessment, where we're assessing kind of informally as we go and adjusting our instructions based on what we find out through formative assessment. And I'd like to ask that WUSD and all community and education partners dig deeper and start to do that with our programs, including curriculum, consultants, software. We need to not look back, we need to look at what we're doing, when we're doing it, and see how we can get the most bang for our buck out of what we're doing. And I'll give you an example. I was able to meet with Ms. Autry Streak and Matt Ainsworth last week, and we were talking about our brand-new math curriculum, which you probably heard some people have very strong feelings about. But what we were talking about is how to make it work and what we can use and what we need to tweak and what we need to get from other places, and recognizing the strengths and weaknesses. And those are the things that we should be doing with all of our programs as we go. We shouldn't be looking back afterwards and saying, whoa, man, that adoption, we dropped the ball there. We should be saying, how can we make this work? What is good about it? What needs to be changed? So I don't know how we do that, but I think we need to be purposeful about it. It's something we need to think about, because we spend a lot of money on these things, and we should get the most out of them. And so stand by for me to think about that and for you to think about that and figure out how to do that in real time. Remote. Okay. As most of, well, I'm sure you're all aware, I hope you're aware, we have a 4% off-schedule salary increase that's about to expire, and it just so happens that it's expiring in a year where most of our health benefits went up 18.4%. So in short, next year, there's going to be real hardship for all WUSD employees. And I think it's really important that we talk about it now before it happens, because we need to be thinking about it, we need to be thinking about what's happening to our families and our community and our employees and how we address it. And of course, I'm bringing it up in a contract year, so that's, you know, that doesn't, I'm sure you guys don't disregard that. But there's some things in our district. Both WSTA and WUSD are committed to equity and fairness, and we say that, it's in everything we do. It's literally in our flyers and our pictures up there. And I think when we're talking about equity, we need to talk about what is happening with healthcare currently. Because what is happening in Washington Unified School District is going to be really prohibitive for retention and recruitment of new candidates. It's going out of control. And it wasn't so long in the past that WUSD was like many of our neighboring districts, where the district, where the district contribution was a percentage of benefits as opposed to a flat number. And so when things like this year happened, the burden was shared by all of our family. Currently, it is a flat rate, and when the percentages go up, it's on the back of our employees and their families and their kids. And so obviously, we do this work in the bargaining room, and we're gonna be working to try and address that. We've worked to try and address it in the past. It's hard, because we know benefits are expensive for the district and for teachers. But what we're saying is that we think that this is an equity issue. We think that we should all share the cost of benefits going up, and it shouldn't just be on the backs of the employees that we're trying to retain and we're trying to recruit. So I'm just sending this to the cabinet here, I'm sending it to the board. Please consider this as an equity issue if you're trying to recruit and retain highly qualified teachers in West Sacramento. It is going to have a greater and greater impact on our ability to do just that as we move forward. And if we're going to fix that problem, it's probably going to be much easier to fix now than waiting five or 10 years. So that's all. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you, President Nepp. Now for our CSEA report. President Gendara.
Good evening, Board President Coffey, Superintendent Hildreth, and Cabinet. I'll make mine quicker than Doug's. First, I want to thank also WSTA. First, I want to thank also WSTA for our holiday party. It was a good time, and me and Doug's relations have been good. I do want to thank HR, Farah Baljeet and her staff. Communication has been really good, a complete turnaround. With that being said, I do want to bring up the investigations. I know I spoke up here before about a third party. I think we need to get a third party to do investigations. Like Doug said, it's really bogging down other work that needs to be done. I have investigations that are pending almost a year that need to get wrapped up. They're just hanging out there. I don't know what that process is. I don't know who needs to present it to you guys, but third party. I do want to say as of tonight, it just got emailed, I don't know, 5 o'clock. I know I spoke about it before, the YCCA proposal, the MOU, our proposal for the community school, MOU got emailed to HR, Farah, tonight. No, it still has to get negotiated. I know you're looking forward. It's not on there. Also, paraeducators, all classified staff, but paraeducators, we really need to look at, again, like Doug said, equity pay. I have a lot of vacant positions. They're leaving. They're leaving. I can go make more money as a paraeducator at Sac Unified. They're leaving. If we want to keep them, they're in classrooms with teachers supporting the students, but they're leaving because of the pay. So I think it's something we need to look into. With that, you guys have a good holidays and good evening.
Thank you for that. Okay. Public comments that we have. There's a disclaimer that I know I'm supposed to read before I say public comments, and I'm looking for it.
Our internet is down too, so that's part of the issue.
They changed the Wi-Fi password. That's what I heard.
Mario was not updated of the Wi-Fi issue. The disclaimer is on the Manila folder with this, it's labeled disclaimer.
Oh, there it is. It was under my other stuff. Thank you. Okay, public comment disclaimer. At our regular board meeting held on February 9th, 2023, the board resolved that written public comments received by 3:00 PM on the day of the meeting will be provided to the board and read, and read into the record, but not read during the meeting. Members of the public may address the board on the topics of our board agenda during every meeting. In addition, during regular meetings, the public may also address any topic within the jurisdiction of the board. Please know the board is listening to your comments, but by law cannot meaningfully respond in this forum to items not on the agenda. The board may limit the total time for public input at any topic to 20 minutes unless it waives the right limit, the item limit for an item. Individual speakers may be limited to three minutes to comment on any topic. The board respects the right of members of the public to speak regarding matters within its jurisdiction. However, please recognize that comments regarding students other than the speaker's own children made during a public board meeting may be a violation of the student's right to privacy and thus the speaker may be legally liable. If you reference a student's name other than your own student, you may be deemed out of order. Furthermore, it is important for the public to understand that negative or derogatory comments made against district employees or others, even those made in a public board meeting, may be actionable civil defamation. Although the board may not prohibit such comments, board policy allows the public to lodge complaints against district employees, providing more opportunity to be heard than is allowed under the open, open meeting law that governs this meeting. And with that.
Yes, we do have three public comment requests this evening. Our first speaker is Samantha Burr. And then it would be Nan, number two.
Hi. So a couple of months ago, I came up because I was confused about the status of my MOU for the Elica Health Clinics. And now I'm back because I'm still confused about the status of my MOU with my Elica Health Clinics. I have gone back and forth and back and forth. I go through these emails. The last one I got said, from Elica, said that it was turned in to our department on 12-1 so that it could make it by the deadline of 12-4 to be put on the agenda. But here I am. It's not here. Don't understand what's happening. I don't understand what the holdup is, and I have kids that need this service. We're again talking about equity, and I have kids that I can't get into school, that I'm excluding from school because they don't have their vaccines, they don't have their things, and I don't have my clinics. I don't know what to do. I don't want to keep complaining about this, but last time when I came here, it felt like I got some movement, so I'm going to keep coming and I'm going to keep coming and I'm going to keep complaining and you all are going to be just as tired of me as the county is and just as tired of me as everybody else that I keep emailing and asking where the heck this is, but I need to know what's happening with it. Please, 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 somebody help me find out what the status is of my MOU for my mobile clinics. Thank you.
Our next public comment request is from Nan, and I won't try to say your last name, Nan, I'm sorry. G, Nan G.
Is this okay? Good evening, Superintendent Dr. Hildreth, Board President, Board Trustees and Cabinet Members. I'm here tonight because I want to thank you and the CSEA President, Vice President, and our Washington Unified School District, Samantha Burr, and everyone else involved with making the HealthAids a full-time position. On, on Tuesday, just after 4:00, a mom called the school to inform me her child was at the school at an after-school activity and needed assistance. I was there and I was able to assist him. So this could have been a medical emergency. So I just want you to know that your decision has already made a difference. I went home and that night I had a nightmare about this child, and I got to wake up the next day and just be so thankful that I was there. I want to thank you for listening, responding and supporting the HealthAids. I'm really proud to be an employee of the Washington Unified School District. Thank you.
Our last public comment request is from Stephen Wees.
As I'm walking up, I want to take credit for some of those students we saw earlier because they were formerly of mine.
Good evening, everyone. So President Nepp, first off, my name is Stephen Wees. I'm a sixth-year middle school math teacher here at Stonegate and currently head of WSTA's bargaining team. So when President Nepp spoke, I think he painted a little too rosy of a picture with the healthcare situation. As you all know, this year, this school year and next are critical bargaining years for WSD and WSTA-like. As we enter these times, I want to draw attention to WSD's and WSTA's commitment to equity. However, equity for students can only occur with equity for those serving students. Equity, of course, means providing the resources, tools and skills to be successful whilst eliminating barriers that prevent success and growth. From a personal level, equity for me means having a living wage that I can use to comfortably live on within the community. I was at that my wife and I, both with masters in working in public education, find we are unable to afford a house and have to contemplate whether or not we can afford to have kids. This job is dependent on having kids, if, after all. These conditions are not unique to me and a pity party will not, will not solve anything. However, I am bringing it up in light of the dramatic increase in costs and benefits for WSTA members. By simply saying that our healthcare plans have increased 18.4% is really not accurate. That may be the cost increase to the plan, but not to me nor the members of WSTA. Equity, I would think, would mean that if those are the increases in costs, they're split equitably among WSD and the members. They're not. The disconnect here is that nearly 100% of the cost increases to the plans are put on the members of WSTA. Our costs go up, not WSD's. The following numbers are the percentage increase in cost from 2023 to what they will be in 2024 that our members have to brace for depending on their plan. 84%, 43%, 500%, 60%, 1,763%, 133%, 117%, 125%, 141%, 131%, 127%. Those are not cherry pick numbers. Those increases represent all the possible health options that we have to choose from. My personal plan, which is one of the cheapest options just for my wife and I, is going from $60 a month to $300 a month next year. That's a 500% increase. WSDA's increase, 0% for that. I'm shouldering that burden. This is not equity. How can I afford to keep working in WSD and expect any sort of comfortable life when these are the percentage increases I have to endure? I hope that as we enter bargaining time, the word equity is not carelessly thrown around. These, there needs to be fundamental changes in how WSD invests in its employees. I would like to acknowledge that we agreed to this contract two years ago, so I'm not backwards thinking, I'm forwards thinking. So how, I am setting the groundwork for changes that I need to see happen in order to have some sort of comfortable life that I think two people with masters working in public education deserve. I really hope that my comments do not fall on deaf ears, and I really hope you believe that these are not phantom cherry pick numbers. I have the proof to back it up. They're straight off what was provided from WSDA. So please consider this an ongoing issue that equity is not only for some, it's for all, including our members. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the public comments. Okay, so now we're going to public hearing, and it says that there are none. And, and information discussion items. First, the overview of Community Schools Initiative at Washington Unified School District. Dr. Mascherena, Director of Equity, Diversity and Inclusion.
Good evening, Board. Good evening, Dr. Hildreth. Good evening, Cabinet, and to all of our team and supporters that are here with us that helped make this initiative move and go. Very proud to be here as the Director of Equity, Diversity, Inclusion and the lead for this program and proud to be here with Genevieve, and I'll let her introduce herself.
Hi, everyone. Hi, President Coffey, Trustees, Superintendent Hildreth, the Cabinet and all the staff and members of our team and all the Washington Unified Team. I'm really happy to be here. My name's Genevieve Levy. I'm the Chief Program Officer from United Way California Capital Region. I've been with the organization just about a year and a half, but have over 20 years of experience working in nonprofit and community-based organizations in the region. I'm in a short stint working with our local Assembly Member when he did represent Yolo County as well, so I got very connected to some West Sac folks during that time. And so this does feel like a nice connection and tie-in to so much of the work that I've had an opportunity to do and very excited again to be here today and present on this topic and really hope to answer questions that I think have been out there, shed some light and maybe provide some new information updates also.
Special shout out to my mom, who is a retired principal, for coming here and probably saw, thought she saw her last board meeting, but is now here supporting. And my son, Jack, who is a proud Southport Duck, and so he's here holding it down late past bedtime. So with this initiative, our Community Schools Initiative, we checked all the boxes because it aligns to everything that we do here for our goals for student success, certainly our four equity principles as well as our four pillars and our core values. Our objectives for this presentation, we are going to do an overview of the United Way partnership, talk about our processes and support that we have implemented and our new structures through this initiative, current and proposed expenditures, as well as a little bit about the evaluation of the program for the two different grant funding streams that we have, as well as some celebrations about what has been happening and some next steps in our initiative. We, oh, yep, thank you. So this is, Yorgos has been making lots of things. I'm not sure where he went, but he was making bookmarks, but he's also made this incredible one-pager that we put together with him and his team to kind of be able to socialize and share with the district and the community at large. We're talking about all sorts of different ways that we can maybe send it out, you know, have it available. It's just a general overview, and we have some printed out that we would like to pass out so everyone can see it as we are speaking.
Yeah.
You want to say anything else about that?
No, thank you. A lot of the points that this touches on will go into more detail in a larger format on subsequent slides. For example, the multiple funding sources, some initiatives that have already taken place at the schools, we'll talk more about.
Yes, thank you.
All right. Okay, so back to, I guess, me and just United Way in general. I wanted to back way up and sort of talk a little bit more about what our United Way, this United Way California Capital Region organization does in our region, because I think even that might be an unknown for a lot of folks. So our organization has a square one approach. Sounds fancy, and what that really means is that we believe that to help families lift out of poverty and to be successful, it starts with the children. So it starts in a variety of ways. We have many programs that I will touch base on, so we help provide free books to any child age zero to five in all of Yolo County through the Dolly Parton Imagination Library. Thank you, First Five at Yolo for that initiative years ago. We also support a kindergarten readiness camp in Woodland, are trying to expand that to West Sacramento this year and in Clark'sburg in subsequent years. Additionally, with helping families, again, helping children that also is at home. So we believe that through our Guaranteed Income Program, right now, we're actually going to be launching our third and fourth cohorts coming up in 2024. We also provide digital devices, fancy laptops and hotspots in a way of connecting to the internet, thinking about families getting able to do homework, have telehealth opportunities. Additionally, Free Tax Prep is a service that we provide and coordinate across five, the five counties that we serve in the region. And something new coming to Yolo County in 2024 will be our Housing Navigation Support, so helping folks find and then stay in housing. And also our Literacy Tutoring Program. We conduct that at over 10 partner sites throughout Sacramento and Yolo County. Again, is another service we would love to bring to the district if it is applicable. And then Community Schools is just listed as one there on the bottom, but it is our largest and most, I would say, robust program in the sense of the efforts that our organization's putting towards this. And I apologize, I forgot about foster youth support. I did want to add that as Chief Program Officer, I do oversee actually all of these programs except the Housing Navigation and Sustainability. And poor Lauren sometimes is like, can you talk? I'm like, in a meeting. And they're like, can you talk? Also, still in a meeting for a different program, but a lot of our time is spent towards this Community Schools effort. Thank you, Mario. Oh, actually, I'm so sorry, go back one more. My apologies. The other two things before that that I wanted to touch on is actually some of our background work before we got involved with this Community Schools Initiative would be to highlight our work that we did with the Robla School District, I want to say 10 to 15 years ago, so not me, but the organization was involved. And that would be really what I would consider Community Schools before it was called Community Schools. We had a robust partnership with that district and really through parent engagement, family engagement, students, staff, determine what the needs were, helped apply for grants and bring those services to the district. A lot of those still exist, such as access to healthy meals was one of the first things that was identified, and we helped build out their entire school lunch program. Again, it's a small district, five schools. We also helped with an accessibility through the digital devices and helping with telehealth access. And also the literacy tutoring was one of those identified needs, and we did bring our literacy tutoring program to that district as well. But then, as time went on, our support wasn't needed. These became full, robust running programs within Robla. We were able to step back and go on to other programs and initiatives. Additionally, United Way participates in, I say campaign giving, because that was how my previous nonprofit role, we were one of the partners of United Way, is that a lot of corporate organizations, corporate businesses in the region would give monetary support. And so we have a vast network, not just of community-based organizations, of all other nonprofits that serve in the five counties, but also corporate donors. These are resources we've already been tapping into to support. These are resources we've already been tapping into to support Washington Unified through donation drives, dropped off socks and jackets and toiletries recently. It was just one of our companies that wanted to support and we said absolutely we have that need and connected them here back with West SAC. All right. Okay, so thinking back to the grants, to the planning grant. So we approached, we approached Washington Unified and said, hey, we have this opportunity. We want to help you apply for this. Let's do it. It's a planning grant. We think there's more opportunities coming. Let's get in quickly and do this. We had a successful application, got the planning grant, completed that work in one year. And during that year, that teed us up very nicely to apply for the Full Service Community Schools Grant. That's the federal grant. So we got that during the same time that a lot of the planning work was done, but we used the work we'd already done as the framework for that grant application. And to give a little bit of context, again, as sort of like a Y United Way, is that we had a ton of resources and other United Way Network colleagues to reach out to, webinars, training, support for that federal grant. So there are 13 other United Ways across the US that already are participating in the Full Service Community Schools Grant, the first one in 2008. And just United Ways alone have helped bring 75 million to local school districts through those funds. There was actually, very timely, the conference that Lauren and Bianca Solorio, our Community Schools Partnerships Manager, just attended. That was in Virginia. Multiple of their sessions were led by United Ways that are working in partnership with school districts in other parts of the US. And we're really excited to see that those partnerships continuing. For the Full Service Community Schools Grant, we received 2.488 million, so almost 2.5 million across five years. Four of those were grantees within California. And this is very unique to this federal grant, which is different than the CDE implementation grant. So specifically for the Full Service Community Schools Grant, the grant application has to be a partnership between an LEA and at least one community-based organization and actually usually is a consortium. For our grant application specifically, we had the strong main partnership between United Way and Washington Unified, but had, I believe, up to five other probable partnerships identified through what we had already heard from the planning grant of where those needs were, so likely to partner with. There were informal partner MOUs to say, this is how we're pushing this grant forward. These are the partnerships that are going to be there. So no Full Service Community Schools Grant is granted without that strong, strong partnership. We're looking at some data today as well. Very interesting. The trend across the federal grants has been to fund more CBOs directly instead of LEAs. And so the trend is our year, our cohort was 2022, and 60% where the CBOs receive the funds. And then this year was 67% and that is an increasing trend. As a reminder, the facilitator roles fully for Riverbank and River City are funded directly from this grant. Something else, just again, giving more context for the federal grant. It is a capacity building and development grant. So the main, in the definition of this grant and the requirements of the application, requirements of when it was fulfilled, is it is given to the district, the LEA, and the CBO and the consortium to use the funds to coordinate pipeline services at the school sites. Meaning, what are those critical needs that we've been hearing elevated by the community through the planning phase or through the continued planning and community engagement that's occurring at the beginning of this? So with pipeline services, some of those that were identified early on, again, these are examples, but identified early on as possible fits to fill those needs were the possible partnership with YCCA to bring those much-needed resources that they provide in the community to the school sites. A partnership with, for example, Yolo Food Bank and bringing their food distribution services in different forms to the different school sites and the community. And then also a much-vetted and looked into many partners, UC Davis, for hopeful mental health support services. So all of those represent hopeful potential partnerships that all had been elevated during the planning phase through community engagement and are examples of pipeline services. So this is the model, the federal grant is the model that we used as we proceeded forward also with designing the plan and writing the implementation plans and applying for the CDE, the state CDE grant, which again, we helped and supported those efforts greatly. One of the other really unique components is the independent evaluation. So I just was hearing in our previous presentation, the importance of constantly taking a look at what you are doing and making changes, not just looking back, but looking in this current moment. And that's absolutely what we have the opportunity to do every single year and ongoing with our federal grant as well as CDE. So very unique is that the CDE grant does not have an evaluation requirement yet. It's being talked about, oh, this is going to come. We will already have it. We will already have a form of it that hopefully will fit in, we will use because it is a requirement of the Full Service, the federal Community Schools Grant. We have more information about the evaluation coming later as well. Okay, this is my favorite slide, but it has way too much detail. So I'm going to tell a story instead of reading all the bullet points, okay? So one of the things that I heard, and I'll just be super transparent because that's me, is what do you do, meaning like United Way, what are you doing that's different than what I see our Community Schools facilitators doing? Or sometimes to be super blunt, what is your Community Schools Partnerships Manager doing, who is Bianca and is amazing and went to Elkhorn and went to River City and is from West SAC? What is she doing that's different than what the facilitators are doing on a day-to-day basis? And so I'm going to tell the story of the Collins Care Event, okay? Just this because it paints a lovely picture. So I was at the office, so was Zeleni, who's our Director of Impact with Bianca. We got the requests from Lauren and from the facilitators that said the request came from Student Services. I'm going to get that part right. Said, we have this awesome event. It's for the most needy families in the district. Can we provide gift cards, books, blankets? And we all took a pause and went, maybe, was the short answer. This was Tuesday. The event was Saturday. So we quickly went into, poured into the federal requirements, all of our guidance, all the procedures and policies and said, okay, we think we can do this, but we have to make, state this case for why. So the problem is I could go out right now and just buy stuff on the credit card. But when I try to do my reimbursement report to the federal government, if that money is not approved or that expense is not approved, we're not going to get that. The organization's going to be out those funds. We wanted to do our due diligence. So we wrote up an entire plan, basically saying that we're going to use this as another opportunity for engagement. Absolutely yes. Stated the critical needs, mentioned the importance of providing this incentive for the families that attended. Thank you, Zeleni, for writing this up. Got it submitted to our federal contacts. They replied early because they're East Coast. And we said, great. So then the short answer became yes, but we have to ask a couple more things before we show up on Saturday with the gift cards. So we also needed to design a different, more robust internal gift card procedure because of the volume of gift cards. That's a lot of basically money that an individual staff person is carrying around, so security protocols. We developed a form and the tracking form when it's being distributed. And then we set out to buy all of the supplies. Then on Friday, we had the opportunity to meet with Lauren and the facilitator team and train them on the procedures and explain, okay, Saturday, we're going to use this. This is how it's going to be documented. This is great. Great news is this policy now exists for these cards if we need them again for a similar need. But it took this time to sort of put this in place. And I wanted to share that example because I think a lot of times you may not, you may see us standing side by side with your team, handing stuff out. And not that they didn't also do a lot of work, but just say, we're the back of the house, behind the scenes. We're really making sure that we're spending the funds correctly so we can get reimbursed. So we're set up for being able to be eligible for additional, you know, funds down the road. And that we are also going to bring that exact same assistance with management. What are the requirements? Our knowledge of the federal requirements will bring to the state requirements, really helping to manage it in that way. Beyond that is a ton of other bullet points.
I was going to add, the beautiful thing about the Collins Care Event was that back of the house work, right, that was happening. And then the incredible facilitator team teaming up with Student Services and, you know, surveying families as they were coming in, what services would you use? Handing out blankets, handing out books, in addition to all the incredible things that the Student Services team was doing. And so that collaboration meant that, as I'll share on the next slide, please, Mario, we were able to get 137 more families to give us their input about what services they would use in a community school setting. And so these are some of the ways that we have been able to engage with our community, starting with a district-wide survey that was shared on district and school site websites, virtual, physical flyers, you know, tabling events. That was a total of 343 students, 152 parents, and 105 staff members. And then additionally, 137 families, as we talked about. As we're going, that's data from the spring. We want to make sure we're still meeting the needs as we go on. United Way conducted interviews with nonprofit partners in the area to talk about what they viewed as the greatest strengths and highest needs. We always want to lead with that strengths-based approach. We know that West SAC is a community that is incredibly diverse and has so much to offer and so many strengths. And so we want to start from that place. Listening sessions conducted in English, Spanish, Dari, Farsi, Russian, Urdu, Punjabi, making sure that we were getting everyone in our community. And then here are just some, a drop of different places that the team has been. Fall, all the fall, you know, fall festivals at the different sides, Dia de los Muertos events, trunk or treat, you know, they show up at SAB meetings, DLEC, you know, career fairs, et cetera. Really trying to think about all the different ways that we can engage with our families and our community, whether it be local churches, if it's drop-off and pickup as you bring your student, whatever it might be to make sure that we're listening to what the needs are. And so we, results from these needs assessments, which is the first place to start, right? What is the community saying is driving the work that we're doing. So the top five needs in our community are clothing, toiletry, basic necessities, access to food and nutrition services, mental health services, regular exercise and fitness regularly is ranked among the top, as well as college assistance and financial aid support. So these top five are what is consistently driving any decision that we're making, any MOU that we're trying to, you know, work on, any site decisions. We are keeping this in mind in addition to the specific needs of each site that is going to help their students and their community grow and flourish. Thank you. So we have completed our CDE planning grant, which was $200,000, as Genevieve mentioned. That was awarded for us to be able to do all of that work. The staff and the people that were able to gather all of that on both of our sides. And now we're in the middle of expending, you know, our federal and CDE grants. We've been given an opportunity to give 6.963 million dollars for our community. This is directly to serve our families, our students, our staff. This is what it's here for. So with the federal grant, the total of 2.488 million, we have spent only 186,000 in the first three quarters of year one of that. The good thing about the federal grant and CDE, I believe, is that they roll over. And so that's not money that necessarily needs to be expended. The difficult part is we keep going back and forth. Federal grant, I think, is a calendar year, whereas CDE is, of course, a different, like, school year. And so we're like, when is that one due? When is that? And so we're trying to keep track of everything. CDE Implementation Grant, 4.275 million and spent 117,000 of that in the first three quarters of year one.
What I do want to touch on also in looking at the federal grant and that that's much less than a fifth of the expenditures is there are things like the facilitators who started in July, not January, as you would expect. And that is a big chunk of the time. And then a lot of the federal funding is towards those pipeline service potential partnerships. So again, as those have gotten pushed back or delayed or depending on what avenue is going, those funds also were something that was allocated as part of year one, but rollover. So we're not losing them, just changing them up.
And as, and I apologize, I feel like I'm having a little trouble with my numbers. We flew in at midnight last night from the conference that I asked all of y'all to go to. So for the federal conference for Full Service Community Schools and listening to the panels and listening to the different models of how this is happening, really best practice is to spend almost sometimes up to a year just building relationships and trust and listening in the community before we're spending any sort of money. So it feels as though we've been at this for quite some time, but really with the whole team together, this has really only been four months since August in terms of them being there, knowing the community, building that trust. And so that's why, of course, our expenditures look low, but also best practice in us being able to maintain long-term sustainability here in the district.
All right. So you have to give me grace. So I would say that one of the strengths that our organization brings is it's much more than just me, Zeleni and Bianca, that you see here, but we have our finance team. I have a fantastic gentleman that helps with data, beautiful charts. We also have our Senior Director of Policy and Advocacy. So additionally, supporting additional legislation that would support funding opportunities in community schools, as well as our entire fundraising department and our grant writing department. So this is one of those things that Genevieve did not create, but I will try to explain to you. But remember, program person, not a money person. I'm the program implementation person. Okay, so the top two are the federal grant. I thought it would be kind of interesting to look at them this way. So thinking about looking at the overall five-year total. Again, there's room for budget changes and revisions every year. So this is the estimated proposed five-year of the top two across the top. Direct program expenses are 31% of the overall. So that's giveaways, contracts, potentially with pipeline services. That's a lot of different components. United Way total is 25%. That's the fee for service for all the support and background work that we're doing. And then for Washington Unified personnel, 44%. Matching funds is a huge, huge part also of being able to receive the federal grant. They want to ensure that the project is stable, much beyond just, here you go, here's the money. But how else are you supporting it? So Washington definitely supporting with 39%. A lot of that was ELOP funding as well. It says LCAP there. But addition, United Way, additional support and funds through resources, staff time, an additional 61% of matching funds. That's through our resources. Then the two across the bottom are for the CDE grant. Again, looking at the way the funds are broken down, five years estimates. Things can always change, be adjusted. Direct program expenses, 53% United Way. So additional cost for us to support the work for additional schools, 12%. Washington Unified, 28, and Indirect, 7. And then looking at the matching for that, we also still contributed another 20% of the matching funds through our resources and Washington Unified contributing 80. These were also, I think, recently shared with folks through email. And I can always be available and follow up with the people that work with me for more detailed questions. And I know you'll have questions later, but I will do my best. But it was nice to kind of see it in this way, I think. The next slide is another way to look. Again, across five years, thinking about the United Way is blue, Washington Unified, so this is staff. And then gray is direct program expenses. This is all towards the community school efforts. This is across the five years. Again, estimates, these can always change.
Thank you, Mario. So expenditures to date, that was a lot of numbers to give you a sense of what that looks like in narrative form. So the federal grant and the state grant both fund, there's two different facilitator positions that are funded on both sides. This is our Community School Kickoff Event, which was incredible and served over 900 members of our community. The Riverbank Marquee, which was a piece of the federal grant that had to include marketing and outreach and what it looked like, you know, that was earmarked for that. And in talking with the community, they said, we can't read the marquee. We can't do different languages. You know, it's so old school. It's kind of like the red blinky lights and it's kind of set up to an old-school computer. And how can we make that so that we can actually tell the community what's happening? Different staff overtime that as staff across the district attend events and help and support us, that's another way that it's going. So some of our proposed expenditures are looking at UC Davis to be able to help us with mental health support at River City and Riverbank and that much-needed one-to-one and small group counseling. Yolo Food Bank has graciously created models just for WSD because they said, we just do one model of food pickup. What would it look like if we did pantries? What would it look like if we did private drive-ups? So they gave us, I think, five different models of what it could look like. And we're leaving it up to each school community to decide what that looks like. A liaison position with YCCA to be able to be at our sites, to be able to deliver those resources and those services directly to our students and our staff and our families. Because we know that core to community school work is that the school becomes the one-stop shop, right? If we can do it here and families trust us and they want to come here, what does it look like for us to be able to provide that? So next slide, please, Mario. Those are some of our proposed expenses. And we're going to introduce-
Oh, yeah. I'll do it.
Okay.
Sorry. So I wanted to introduce my colleague, who again is also new, started in July around the same time. Selena Molina is our Director of Impacts, works directly with me on our United Way team. She's going to speak about the evaluation. Our evaluation partners are called Data for the People. They are out of the Bay Area, and they also were at the conference in Virginia back at midnight. So they will come to another meeting to do a presentation, if that's what desired, and they're very interested in coming here. They've already been here to West Sac, but to come again. So thanks, Selena.
I'm a little short. Good evening, President Coffey, members of the board, Dr. Hildreth and cabinet. Again, Selena Molina, I, as Genevieve explained, I am one of the Directors of Community Impact at United Way. I oversee our educational initiatives at, at the, at the agency, and community schools is one of them. I am very grateful to be here and to be embraced by the West Sacramento community. I am not originally from this area, I'm originally from the Bay Area, but it's an honor and a pleasure to serve this community. As Genevieve explained, we are working with Data for the People. I know that data sometimes can be intimidating for people, but I want to humanize it a little bit. And I will start off by sharing a little bit about our two awesome evaluators who have kind of already jumped in and supported the work. Amy Epstein and Carolyn Reyes are the two evaluators that are working with us. And when we were looking for an organization that would partner with us, we were very intentional to make sure that we were looking at folks that came in with a DEI lens, right? Because we know that that is important to this work. And also folks that understood what community schools work is. Amy actually, both of them actually are school social workers by trade. So before they became evaluators, they were school social workers. So they are very in tune with this work and have done this work before it was called community schools. For the sake of time, I'm not going to read everything on the slide, but as Genevieve mentioned earlier, evaluation is a component and a requirement of the federal grant. And we are going to be evaluating not just the two sites under the federal grant, but also the two, the two other sites, right? Westfield and Elkhorn. And the federal, the US Department of Education has utilized, or selected to utilize the Results-Based Accountability Framework as a way to evaluate the project for the next five years. So what you're seeing on the slide is the alignment of how our evaluators are going to be supporting us for the next five years, that aligns with what the US Department of Education has stated as far as the Results-Based Accountability. So again, we're going to be looking, if you look at the first circle, right? Understanding and knowing what the needs and the goals of the community are. In addition to that, once we know what the community needs are, identifying what programs and services or resources are we going to utilize, right? So how are we going to respond, or what are we going to do in response? So that's the second little circle you see there. And then, of course, we want to evaluate. I know it was mentioned earlier, right? We, we want to do formative assessment, like, part of the continuous improvement is looking at what has been working and what are things that we need to do better. So the, the third little circle that you see there is how well are we doing the work, with eventually the outcome being that, you know, it benefits the students and the school community, and eventually benefits the entire community of West Sacramento. And again, this is going to be an ongoing process, so we're going to be reviewing data consistently. The school site facilitators have already started gathering data. Data has already been shared in regards to, like, how many events are we hosting, or how many community events have we participated in, right? How many families have benefited from some of the, the programs and services that we currently offer? In addition to that, we're going to reflect, right? It's important for us to stop and really reflect on, like, what has been working, or where do we need to identify gaps, so that that way we're very intentional about our next steps. Dialoging is important, right? When something new is coming, or when there's change, sometimes there's a lot of fear. But it's important to have those conversations, and that's what our evaluators are going to help us do as well. And again, learning from this process and applying it to the work for the next five years. And then what you see on the slide are the eight questions that are going to be driving the work that we do these next five years. Depending on where we are in the implementation flay, the, excuse me, implementation phase of the project, the questions may be different. So because we're at the initial phase of the implementation, we're really focusing on, like, the first two, three questions, right? But as we progress, we can revisit these and then add additional questions. And just to highlight, all of these questions align with the four pillars of the framework of community schools, which are integrated student supports, expanding learning time and opportunities, family and community engagement, and collaborative leadership and practice. So with that, I'm going to turn it back to Dr. Mascanillas.
Thank you, Selena. Thank you. Thank you, Mario. Next slide. And so, I'd like to start talking about some of the incredible celebrations since we've started this work. If I can invite my facilitator team, and also Rebecca, of course, who's part of our, and Bianca, yes, our whole team to come up and either sit close or be a part of this. This is, if you will indulge me for a minute to gush about these people and the incredible work that they have been able to do in such a small amount of time, between all of them, I think they speak words of seven or eight languages, they are able, they are from the community, they represent, our families and staff see them, see themselves in our facilitators. I am so proud and so lucky to be able to work with this team. This is just a few pictures of all the different ideas that are constantly being brought to me. What about this? How about this? Could we do this? How, I know, Monica is notorious, you all know Monica Vallada, she's a long time in the community. I know a guy, I know a guy. How about, okay, I, I know somebody who can do that. We see kids playing in our community schoolroom as their parents are using the printers. We see giveaways happening, field trips. There's so much incredible work that's happening every single day that this team is, that this team is doing, and I'm incredibly proud of them. Bianca Garcia, who is our Elkhorn facilitator, is in Mexico with family right now, so she's not able to be here. But we are so thankful to have Vanessa, who is a social worker at Elkhorn, here to speak a little bit about the work that's being done there. So I'm going to pass it over to Vanessa, if she could start with us. Thank you, Vanessa, for being here late and being able to speak a little bit about what's happening at Elkhorn.
Hi, everyone. My name is Vanessa Palomares, and I'm a school social worker at Elkhorn Village. And I'm speaking today on behalf of Bianca, our liaison, but also on my personal experience in collaborating with her. I wanted to highlight her commendable efforts in fostering engagement among our community. She's been actively working on cultivating and bringing the communication among our people. She's very much aware that rapport and trust is very important and needed so that our community can keep moving forward. One of these examples is that Bianca has very seamlessly and smoothly organized our cost meetings every month, and it's open to our community. Through this platform, she's been able to provide essential updates. She's collected feedback, and she's always come prepared with fresh ideas. She's been very transparent and listens to what the community has to say. She, I mean, as mentioned previously, she's only been on our school site for four months, but our Elkhorn students already recognize her. Teachers have shared their insights with her as well, and parents are looking for her on our school campus. And I've benefited myself as a school social worker. I can make referrals if I feel that, you know, a student needs some support that I can provide, I can direct them to Bianca. She's been very diligent in bringing more and more people together every day, and I look forward to seeing the growth of community schools and Bianca at our school. Thank you.
So next, we have Ashraf, who is our community school site facilitator at Riverbank.
Good evening. It's late, so just I'll be very short. So my name is Ashraf Popazai. I'm the community school site facilitator at Riverbank. On August 9th was the kickoff event, so just I started, met August. So I have created, like, I have established, like, a community resources room where we have computers, printers, and our parents just, they are visiting the community resources room by daily basis. They came, they use the computer printing and stuff like that. Also, just I did a student survey to see what exactly they want. So just out of 170 responses, so just the four option, top four, top four option was soccer, volleyball, e-sport, and art. So just, we already contacted with all experts, so just the contracts are on the way. So just, we are on the way to finalize the MOU. So just, maybe we'll start the service on January. And we have had some dental trainings last week, in partnership with Smile Savers. And also, we have partnership with Ties for Tots, Ties for Tots, and just we are distributing, like, almost 250 toys for kids, and the distribution is going to be on Monday. So, thank you so much.
Next is Monica from Westfield.
Hello. I'm short. My name is Monica. I'm the community site facilitator for Westfield. I was raised in West Sacramento, so I was at Elkhorn, Golden State Middle School, and River City. So I'm blessed and humbled to be a community facilitator, because I came as a young kid, you know, trying to figure out the whole community, you know, school system, and to see how can my parents help us and guide us in the, in the school. So I put that in my mind, how can I support my families, anybody that's coming into my doors? So I, you know, build that, building the relationship, and also community relationship, to see how can I better support my kids. And I call them my kids as the students, because they're my kids. I want to make sure, like, they're, they have someone that they could come and talk, and whenever they need anything, my doors are open. I did, I started a peer mediation with my middle school students. A student actually came in, and my, my kids started coming in and said, oh, Ms. Monica, can you do a multicultural for the little ones? I'm like, sure, let's, you know, do something like that. So I also built a Westfield closet for our kiddos, because I noticed, especially not knowing the whole, you know, anywhere, community system and, you know, school system, you know, why are they going to go anywhere else? They could come in and see, how can I support them? And also, I have built, you know, relationships to parents to come in and see, how can I help them with applications, with jobs, or what's out there in the community, applying for resource? So I also built, like, what else can I do for a school event? So we did Back to School Night, we also did St. Winter Wonderland. The kids were so amazed. I also had middle school kids, one, a couple of kids came in and said, hey, Ms. Monica, can I get a jacket? I'm like, sure. Kid you not, 10 minutes later, I had the whole middle school came in, it's like, Ms. Monica's amazing, she has a store. So I was like, what was going on? So I had to make a line and stuff like that, but that's who I am. I, I want to help my kids, and I want to make sure they could come and be supported, and if I don't have it, I'll, I'll get back to them. I know someone. So I know a guy. So this is, you know, so I'm, I'm blessed and humbled to be a facilitator.
And next, Sana Hani from River City.
For community schools to be successful, it's important to first build respectful and meaningful connections with the staff, which is the key ingredient to building a strong foundation for setting the four pillars of community schools. So each time, each time I get the privilege to converse with a River City member, I see here and feel their passion to support our students to be successful, healthy and happy, for our students to be the portrait of a graduate that WSD as a whole aspires towards. I see that they recognize that our students have barriers that impede academic growth and overall well-being, and that's where they're placing their hope for community schools to bring in the wraparound services on campus, such as UC Davis, YOLO Food Bank, and YCCA for starters. To me, community school has always equated to the saying, it takes a village to raise a child. River City High School is my village, and I am most privileged to be part of it. I feel proud of the staff, and I'm, and I'm very thankful for the empowerment and support this initiative is receiving. Stop to say for the River City Raiders, you truly do put the community in community schools, and I'm proud to call myself a Raider on the rise. Thank you.
Hi, guys. I was not expected to talk, but I'm here. So I just want to speak on community schools. I was raised in this community, so it was a great opportunity to come in and be able to do. I not only was raised here, but I also did a lot of my work here. Coming up, I did work for the after-school program with Kid Zone, and then alongside other many things. And to be back, my priority has always been to serve the students. I am studying to be a school social worker, so hopefully one day I could be here in the district as a school social worker. But for now, I think serving my community is definitely important in coming in. Genevieve did talk about a lot of the background work that we do, but my favorite part is coming in and working with the facilitators, working with Lauren, and especially Rebecca, and doing other things like collaborating and getting things done. So one of my favorite parts, it was, took us three weeks to do our kickoff, but that was the first assignment coming in. And I think that was something that I will say I am very proud of us for doing in three weeks. But overall, I think, again, my favorite part again will be serving my community and where I live, where I grew up, and, and serving people who I personally know, family, friends, and people I will continue to, to know.
Thank you. Thank you, Mario. Next slide. We just wanted to give you a snapshot of this incredible team and the work that they're doing from, to hear directly from them. And so some of the further celebrations by the numbers, my favorite one on here is 50 teddy bears and squishmallows that were just donated to Westfield. It's very exciting to be able to give out hygiene kits, parents who have attended community school workshops, backpacks given out, families served, and that bottom number, over 1,600 pieces and articles of clothing, underwear, socks, everything that's been given out in our community because of this team and their incredible work. So wanted to share a few of those numbers, and that's only in four months of work. And so I'm incredibly proud of the team and what they've accomplished so far. Next slide, please, Mario. This is-
Us, just in general, some of the partners.
Some of the partners that we have started building relationships with, and that we are working to build further relationships with, whatever that looks like. If they come in and do a class, if it, donations, whatever it might look like. This is just a visual to show all the different places and spaces that we're trying to build and reach out. As we close up, I just wanted to, we just want to talk about a few next steps that we're looking to, and as promised, I wanted to offer a few takeaways from the conference that we just returned from.
Thank you. So it's kind of just next steps, very broad terms where we're looking, where we're heading. So continuing to build out the critical student supports that we're committed to, mentioning the pipeline services and whatever way we can fulfill those, because those were the elevated, most critical needs, mental health, food and nutrition, and access to basic needs. Continuing to collaborate and build relationships with staff. So that's not just, and I'm United Way speaking and saying that, but also the, the community schools team. So building partnerships within their own school communities across the district, administrators, absolutely labor partners, ensuring that everyone's involved in the collaborative process of making the best decision for your district, for your community, for the students, and of course, the community organizations as well. Continuing to do outreach with students and families and community members. So again, we mentioned that it's not, they- So again, we mentioned that it's not, they said it once and that's it. This was sort of our initial phase was let's get these immediate things in place and then let's keep going. All the while, we're doing engagement, so what are we hearing now? Let's go into the next phase and start seeing how we can bring those services to the schools. So that's ongoing. Continue to plan for long-term sustainability. Five years is going to go really fast. One year is already done for the federal grant. So how can we continue to support this effort beyond? We don't want to just add positions that are going to disappear in the future. So looking for funding, keeping our eye on advocacy opportunities, possible legislation, thinking about continuing to blend funding. So a lot of cool stuff happening with, uh, Medi-Cal and through CalAim, a lot of supported services that can be not just for housing, but also for mental health support and a lot of supports within districts. We want to keep apprised of all of that and be able to represent and bring opportunities to, to the district to support the community.
So I was fortunate to be able to attend the full-service community schools, um, conference, which was held, um, in Alexandria, Virginia, right outside DC. Thank you, Mario. So, um, we were talking about the scorecard that we need to be able to, um, create for our federal grant evaluation, um, as a team. Myself, Bianca and our evaluators attended sessions on early childhood partnerships, um, best practices for collaboration, just listening to incredible, um, success stories of our promised neighborhoods and full-service community school, um, platforms across the nation, which was incredibly inspiring. And so I wanted to share a few takeaways, um, that, um, I heard and we heard as we were in spaces, and so that's the next slide, Mario, thank you, is, um, that the community partner is essential and also required for technical assistance and strategy development. This is similar to our tenant of, we can't do it alone, schools can't do it alone. That's what, um, I tell people often about community schools, it's the acknowledgement that we can't do it alone and it takes a community, it takes all of us together. And so we need our partners to be able to be here with us to do this work, um, that supports are coordinated, aligned, available and accessible. Um, best practice is to have a community, dedicated community school coordinator, so someone who is at the district level, who is doing this work entirely. And I love this work entirely. And also I would love to do some more EDI work, which is very necessary for our district. And so there is, um, best practice for a community school coordinator, as well as dedicated communication, um, and staff to be able to kind of show across the board, what does it look like for all of these different partner agencies and schools to be able to communicate in a way that everyone has access and sees what's happening. Many partner, um, many, uh, staff in full-service community schools have multiple agencies in one space that's happening before, during and after school hours. And so the school becomes the hub and then it is a kind of just diverse, incredible space where people and, um, supports are kind of flowing in and out throughout the day. Culturally responsive practices that are of course centered on our students and really the importance of aligned values and clear objectives. What are we trying to do in this community? Who do we believe is in our community? Who do we believe is worthy of, um, help and support and respect? Um, what do we believe as a district that, um, we, who we want to support and what we want to provide? And, um, those are a few of the takeaways that we got from the conference, very inspiring, but also a reminder that we have a lot of work to do here, um, to be able to, um, be able to, you know, reach our full potential of what we can do with this initiative. So thank you. You know, that was lengthy, but, um, there is been quite a bit going on, so we wanted to make sure we addressed all of it and now we're open for questions. And if my team would like to go, you are pleased, you are pleased more than welcome to go home and rest and sleep, otherwise, um, we're ready for questions.
Are there any public comments at this time?
No public comments received.
Okay. Uh, does the board have comments? Yes. Sorry. Dr. Mascherinius, you are doing DEI work. You look, look at your staff, you look at their stories, their lived experience rooted in this community. So when you get back to it, I look at this, I look at the transformation of people who grew up in this community. Well, I always know somebody because you grew up in this community and that's how West South folks do, right? And you're serving our Northside schools, our most, our highest poverty schools. But I just want to be clear, that is not get back to the stories of your staff today, the languages spoken, the connections that are deeply rooted here. When you want to create culturally congruent, not just competent, congruent. This is what it looks like. This is what it is and it's hard. And I want to acknowledge that. I want to first acknowledge that this is the real work, right? When we talk about equity for communities, for students, for families, lifting that up, you've demonstrated how you're talking to those families and community, primarily in our least resources, resourced neighborhood. With intentionality. Right? So I, I don't want any of you to forget that. I don't want anybody in this room to forget that. That this is transformative and it's trauma-informed and most importantly, healing-centered. When you lift up the voices of community, you heal from the traumas of oppression. Of a K-12 system that hasn't seen the lived experience with the voices of the staff that you just shared today. Clearly, this is, it, it mean, me as a trained school social worker, as a former classified outreach worker in a really tough district, this is what it's about. And quite frankly, there's never enough humans on a campus to deal with the traumas that our kids have faced. So I could never have done it with that. When you talk about CalAim, EPSD, Medi-Cal reimbursement, these are really complex things. Now, how long has, has the county two-by-two been trying to, to get that drawn down? For a long time, when, you know, Linda Luna was here, we've been trying to kind of do that. Because we're always, our staff are so phenomenal, they're always focused on, they're doing the thing because the students and the families are in front of them. So bringing in the expertise, bringing in the folks or the indicators who understand how to connect to larger systems that are outside of K-12 system, that's transformative. The ability to actually see that, right? I just want to acknowledge, just kind of, that was the first response, you know, again, to also see from the beginning when trustee, um, Katie, um, I was going to say Venejas, but Venejas, uh, began to talk about school social, then I took her seat and then we created, you know, school social workers who we created positions and then we added more social workers when I came onboard, found more money for that, right? And the question was, how are we going to always sustain this? Right? And then now we have this opportunity and then we went to like COVID where we knew like, oh my gosh, we got all this one-time money and we wanted to like uplift mental health. And that was really clear, how many often, I don't want us to forget the, the collective trauma we all felt, the students, the families through COVID, right? The divisiveness that was created that is still around right now, quite frankly. That you are bridging all that, you staff. Right? Alongside, together in one community, that's the space you're holding, coming out of a lot of, a lot of energy, right? Um, and so what you are is building a system, building a system of love and support. And how do, how do we get, how do we get back to that? Um, so I just want to first thank you in the four months, it's tremendous. It's a tremendous thing. I'm, hopefully you saw Jeffrey Canada, the, uh, those of you, uh, this is a research-based strategy that is beyond just one state or one county, it is the Harlem Children's Zone, please Google it, please understand what the Harlem Children's Zone is. Decades that it can transform not just schools, but neighborhoods. When students and families are comfortable at schools, they see it as a welcoming sight. Right? Um, so I have a couple of questions though. Yes. Can you explain what a pipeline service is? I'm like, oh, what's a pipeline service? Like explain that and kind of, you've said that a couple of times.
Yes, sorry. So on, on the slide, we don't need to go back, but it's, it's meant to be a service that is on the school campus as a hub, but also helps bring the support there and bring families in. So I think it's also to think of it in terms of what already has happened with the stores, right? The stores, as we're calling them.
Oh, the student stores.
The stores, it's the storage.
This Monica has a store.
But all of the community school sites do where there have, um, emergency supplies. So families are coming in, kids are going to come in and then what? We're going to engage with them, we're going to hear more about what their needs are, or maybe that's how they first come in and then they learn about this service and they learn about this service. But it's, it's these initial services that were elevated during the, and again, initial phase of the, of the community engagement through planning to say, this is what folks really needed. And then what is the next step beyond that? So it's some of the, I don't want to say simple, but food, right? Basic necessities. And then what is the next step beyond? Once those things are more stable and met, what comes next?
Cause I, it, you know, I, um, I knew this, but it's, it's different when you see it on a slide and you had mentioned this, is that the needs of our community in your surveys are basic necessities, toiletry, clothes, basic necessities.
We have supply closets at every single, yeah, the stores at every, at each site that are, um, used all the time.
That also have to replenish, I'm assuming. Um, access to food and nutrition services, food insecurity.
Yes.
Like our families and our communities, our students are actually hungry and that they, they are food insecure, they don't know where their next meal is coming from. Access to mental health service that we've already talked about, but the top three really spoke to me in part because, you know, I had the privilege of actually looking at the, the agenda before this, but we, and I, we've talked about this, is that there are three contracts and I think I've, you know, we, that I saw, Yolo Food Banks, YCCA that, that does CalFresh eligibility, food insecurity, access to food that was pulled and, and I'm sure staff will explain to me why that, those were pulled, but this is food, people are hungry.
I want to add a little anecdote, Ashraf left, but at Riverbank, this is a story that he shared with me and it just was like the perfect example of a community school and I don't know if he realized it in the moment. So Ashraf is Afghan and speaks various languages, so his community feels comfortable speaking to him. And he expressed that one of the things he's doing on a regular basis is helping folks with the SRF form to re-up their.
SRF acronyms.
Yeah, sorry, the re-up of your eligibility for CalFresh for food stamps. So it's something you have to do on a regular basis and it is a barrier if you do not speak, read, write English, you have a scary piece of mail, that's your eligibility form that you need to get in, in order to still be able to get your CalFresh. So he is now learning how to do that, what resources are there for him to provide that information, he's helping people fill out the form at school. So families know now, ah, I can go ask Ashraf for help. And he didn't realize, he was just saying, oh, this is something I've been doing. And I was like, did it, stop, write that down, that's important. And it's just so exactly what you're talking about, feeling comfortable coming in, having access to the service.
So ideally anti-poverty programs, right? And I've done anti-poverty work for decades, is the idea that, you know, it's, it's hard work being poor, right? You gotta go here to get a, a job, you gotta go here to find your food, you gotta go here to get your eligibility, you gotta tell your poverty story 10 different times before you, before you can even get food, but then you can't get food unless you have a driver's license, then you have to get a voucher, then you have to tell your, so the idea of no revolving door.
Yes.
That families who are strained are ready to, the gas taxes, the gas price is high, right? You're going from childcare to childcare, you know, trying to figure all that out. The idea of bringing that to what schools should be centers of community? And collabor, and I know that our, our staff, our teachers are, are doing that, but also to enhance that so that, again, somebody who's struggling, who may be in abusive, violent relationship, right? That they're not really like telling people and they don't have money because they're trying to flee their abuser. Right? So what you are trying to do is actually do that, no, if I, if I understand this correctly, is no revolving door because it really is about anti-poverty programs and making it easier for people who are hungry, who need food stamps.
Yes.
Who need clothes, top three.
And trust us and trust our schools and trust the faces that they see every day to say, help me and not be turned away to go somewhere else.
Right. Which is what the system has always done to drive 10 miles here and there. And so, um, that, that's tremendous. And I think that that's why I was trying to understand, I think Genevieve, you said, you, you actually contribute more than what, so like trying to understand the diagram. So help me understand what is, so that is not part of the grant, it's outside of.
Oh, match.
Yeah, the matching funds, yes, I know, the world of nonprofits.
So, um, I don't have it up in front of me again, but basically to say that there are very direct, um, costs that are put towards to support staff time or the physical supplies that are being purchased, but there's a lot that is represented by other areas of expertise, resources, staff time, that we're not sitting there tracking hour for hour and reimbursing for, networks, contacts, staff time. So when we're saying match, it is all documented in the grant application to say, these are all the ways that we're providing matching funds, meaning in-kind donations, valuing this time, this service, this other good, the supply at a certain amount and then bringing that to the partnership.
And clarifying, you had mentioned 6.936 million, is that current, to date or that total?
That's the total of the three grants, so really.
For five years.
For five years. So those have been secured and promised, they're all reemb, well, except the 200,000 planning one, that's done. The rest are all reimbursed. So that, those funds have been allocated for this program, they've been granted, they're not in pocket because you have to get reimbursed for them, but they have been all granted. That's the total of planning, federal and state implementation.
And then I wasn't there, I apologize, I, I think I was out of, out of town for, um, the gift, gift card distribution. How many were you able to secure for us?
Uh-oh, who's my friend?
Bianca, how many?
How many gift cards and things did we do?
Grocery stores and gas, grocery stores and gas. 105.
This is an example.
What, and, no, one example, but like, but I also, if I, like Tuesday and it was Saturday.
Yeah.
So you turned that around, like, fairly quickly. Um, I, I know that there's a lot of discussions, a lot of things, but, um, really just grateful for the service you provide to our students and our families who are absolutely in need, right? It's not an esoteric thing, it is actually, like when you see the needs list, they're tangible things, it's close, it's just, it just, well, thank you for that and I'm, I'm hoping to see, and, and then, um, part of that is just wondering the, Elica, I know that Sam left, but like the Elica Center, like the Sam Burr left, like the Elica Health Clinic as well, I didn't see them up there, but also wondering, we'll wonder about that contract too, when it's going to come, because that's part of this as well.
Medical is, yeah, medical is absolutely a piece of this and one of the things that we've been trying to, Communicare, Elica, Kaiser even, like just trying to have lots of different conversations around what that could look like. We know we had Communicare or Elica come out to the August 9th and was offering, you know, and was able to do immunizations and whatnot. And so that's an ongoing conversation, but as I understand it, that contract I think is through Student Services because they've been offering that on, on an ongoing basis or I, I, but I'm not sure, that's not necessarily a community school contract, it would look a little bit different from our.
Right. So if I could just say, so we will provide the trustees with an update, um, tomorrow.
I would actually, can you get back to Ms. Burr about it? Because I asked on the 1026 board meeting for us to get back to her about it.
And, and we did, and I think she shared that there has been communications back and forth and, and she, she had, is aware, so to be able to get that information back to her about where we are now and share that with trustees as well, we will be doing that.
Again, I wasn't sure if it was part of this, it's naturally part of this because mobile clinics are, should be part of this, even though, you know, like they probably are not just serving the community schools, that's really important, so as part of.
If it needs to be in year two.
Yeah, and if it's something.
Definitely can be.
Because we, we, we've committed, committed to that. So, um, really, I, I just think, you know, as I think about this, really centering what are, what are the needs of our, our students and our families, this is a tremendous help. Um, and the fact that you are in our Northside schools and, and River, you know, River City, that's, that's telling, that's equity, that's justice. The fact that you're hiring people from the community, both, um, you know, from, you know, a part of our, our own staff, like lifting them up through that pipeline is amazing because, um, they know, they know their families, the languages, language access, tremendous. So, um, I just, yeah, thank you for that. And I just had those, those clarifying questions and, and comments, I suppose, but, uh, really appreciate that because as a refugee kid who grew up in poverty, not having my mom drive from place to place to place.
Matters.
It matters.
Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Wong. Any other comments or questions?
Any other comments or questions?
All right.
On, on, yes. Yeah, thank you, thank you. As you guys were presenting, again, it just takes it back to being the kid, you know, the son of immigrant family and not knowing why it took all day to maybe and just kind of hope still. And you meet so many people, but I can say from experience, resources without relationships don't mean anything. We can continue to have resources and money poured into communities, but without the relationship, that we don't have a system. There is no outreach. So thank you, thank you to everybody who's doing the work. It's great to see, you know, familiar faces out there doing the work and just, it makes it feel like a neighborhood, right? And when parents can come in and they don't know your position, they don't know if you're a director or a clerk or a front person, and they really don't care, they just want to know that they can trust somebody. So with that, I would just say, my question would be like, how is staffing going? Like, how are you, because you're setting big goals. Are you feeling like you have the support you need to get the right people? One thing is doing the right work, and the other thing is having the right people doing the right work. So how are you all doing with staffing, with recruitment? How's that, how are those efforts going?
That's a wonderful question, thank you. Thank you for your kind words, and also a great question. I've been very fortunate to hire such an incredible team and able to get them here and working quickly. And so we've been able to do that for our facilitator role. I will also say that our current WUSD staff has been amazing at cross collaborating and saying at each site, you know, outreach is working together with social workers, with liaison, with the facilitator to sit down and say, okay, we're all serving the same purpose. How do we do it in, you know, unique and innovative ways? Because everyone kind of has their piece. And so that's been incredible to see the support from the current staff that's already there because it is, it is new, here's a new person, what do they do, what does it look like different? I would say that current capacity for what it looks like right now is, it's quite a bit, I was going to say for Rebecca is, Rebecca is taking on all of the, you know, the community school contracts and whatnot. And she is about to go on leave and give us our newest member of the EDI, a team, baby Elena. But I would say, not right now, not, hopefully not right now. And we are, I think that we're in a good place. I did point out that one of the best practices I saw was a community school coordinator that sits at the district level that is as their sole purpose, to be able to just kind of negotiate, look at all those different contracts and negotiate all those different things. I think that is something that we could look at in the future. But as of right now, I feel very confident in my team and their ability to be able to do what we need to do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think, thank you for this presentation. It's one that we've been looking forward to for a long time, and it's been moved a few times. And I'm just really glad that we have had it this evening. Thank you for giving your time to this. And it's clear that a lot of work went into all of these pieces and what's happening. And it really is, I mean, we're preaching to the choir, this is the biggest need. And we know in our district, more than ever, especially with COVID times, districts had to be all things, all people. They had to be vaccination clinics, they had to be, you know, all of these pieces. And it just, we knew that we need to bring in more resources. It's what has to happen for most underserved, traditionally underserved schools because that's where the families are, and that's how they can have access. And so I'm very grateful for our state for pushing this work and for many organizations that did it, CTA included, because we knew that this is what's right for kids and then for the federal grant as well. So I want to thank you with United Way because we would not have captured that federal grant had it not been for the partnership with United Way. And that's a really critical piece for this because it gives us a lot of additional funding, which is exciting. So I have a few questions with this that I'll go through. So one is, I have seen as well a model, models with a coordinator. I have seen that in other districts that they have a coordinator who's helping kind of manage some of these pieces. And I'm wondering, you spoke to it, I think your facilitators as well. When I've had one-on-one conversations, have talked about how sometimes it's hard to have just somebody pull all of this information to go through because there is sometimes some red tape feeling of having to get this approved or go here. And so I'd be very interested to hear more about that down the road of what that could look like because I do see it in other places as being an asset. And then one that I saw here that I wanted to speak to, I see, of course, these top five needs are really powerful for us to have written out, for us to understand what our community is asking for. What would be the college assistance or financial aid support? Have you identified that yet, or are we still in work on that? Who could help us with that?
We've looked at it a little bit, especially at River City, of course, and working with Brittany over there and the, you know, different members of the cost team. I think a lot of it is the financial aid support piece and looking at, I know Sanaa has been working with a contract with an AI-generated like text app to be able to work through like FAFSA, which is pretty incredible that we're trying to look at. We also, because at River City, we focused on newcomer support in kind of the first 30 days, thinking about what does college applications look like for our refugee and newcomer students? And how could we, you know, streamline that process and potentially fund like applications and whatnot for that demographic of students? I know that there has been a multiple different, with a home run, college, but college savings account. I think that we've had an enormous amount of, actually, I think, over 75 families at River City, I think 30 or 40, and they wrote mini-grants to West SAC to be able to bring in food, you know, to be able to have that at two of our different sites. And so I think it would take some more time in talking with our kids and hearing that student voice about what their barriers are there. But those are some of the things that we're in, are in the works. Brittany felt very strongly about holding college workshops not at River City, but instead at our K8s and all, especially on our Northside School because we know that the services don't have to be physically at the location as long as we are serving our entire community. So we could hold college assistance and FAFSA nights at Elkhorn, at Westfield, at different spaces. And so that's something else that we could look at as well.
I want to talk, this was even pre you, but a little bit of me, pre you. Was it, we also talked about parent education that you talked about and really thinking of that in terms of designing a series of workshops. So we're educating, maybe focus on newcomer or non-native English speakers, and then providing the workshops in native language, sort of like, what is this whole process about? And have different topics on each. And I do know a FAFSA organization that's on top of my head, and I will have to get to you tomorrow. And I apologize for that. And then also, we definitely talked about the field trip aspect. Excuse me. So that was something really exciting when we were in the planning grant phase that was elevated about seeing how we could coordinate the transportation for the juniors to be able to go to field trips, not just going to Sac State and UC Davis, but let's go somewhere else, right outside of our region, or outside of our region.
And Sanaa Monica took a group of families and students to Fedia.
Over to the, the council.
Yeah, Sacramento State, which was.
And I think, I know I just was speaking to a family just this weekend, and I had not realized because I have younger kids, my lens of college, but they had said that they went to Washington Middle, they're interviewing high schools because that's what some of our families do. So they went to Washington Middle College, and they said, how do you help kids get into college? What do you do with these pieces? And they talked about how they sit with them with a computer going through those forms. And then, and so that's something I think that some of our families are really looking at, our kids. I mean, that is a huge equity issue. You get to pay to go to a private high school where, and they're pale. And then hearing what people are paying to have somebody help them write their essay. I mean, it was, all I could think about was, what about all of our kids that can't afford that? So I think maybe Washington Middle College, maybe if we just see to what they're doing and get some ideas, that might be helpful too, since I know they're doing that. And then you're right, the home run is a great one. My own fourth grader had to do assignment last night where I had to write about if I had a 529 plan for her and what if she wanted to go to trade school. And then she did a whole Venn diagram on different types of colleges. I'm not kidding you because they're working on that. So clearly, people in Washington Unified are working at elementary level to think about their futures, not always being college, but being trade schools or others. Okay, a couple more, I know it's late and it's gone through. I love hearing about the community supplies at every piece. I appreciated hearing about what we'll be seeing for the needs or for the assessments of the program, how it is working and having that be very transparent. I think that would be a great presentation for us at the end when that comes through. My question would be now, who is responsible for the grants in terms of, I assume that you have to submit something annually maybe that goes with that report? So who's responsible for federal grant, who's responsible for state grant, and how that gets done?
So absolutely us. The United Way is responsible for federal, and we will assist to the utmost degree that is desired through the partnership in terms of filling everything out, take a review, you hit submit, whatever that needs to look like. But we're the organizers, gatherers, writers. Hey, I'm working through this, yeah, I think, oh, I need that over there, get me this, just like we've worked on the grants together, so.
For the, for the planning grant, like when we did the end of planning grant, that was. So ultimately, California, the CDE ones are me or WUSD to submit them, but in collaboration with us together doing it, and then federal grant completely.
Okay, and then you work together on a timeline for that, for the one that will be coming up?
And my director of impact, Delaney, is also going on maternity leave, so we are going to be ahead of the game because we need her help before she goes out also, but no, it's us.
Okay. I know. Okay, so as long as there's a plan for when you are not there, because I, because we don't want to miss any deadlines. I know that a lot fell on our staff when some were missed or people were moved, so we just want to make sure that those all are done for it, thank you for that. And then the last piece, I'll end with this, I think it's, I see the proposed expenditures, I see it going with as well the pieces of the community need and what would be helpful moving forward, I'm sure as it comes and we see these contracts that we approve, is seeing very clearly, we see how it fits in here, understanding very clearly where that's coming from and what those contracts look like, like MOU programs with this. I don't know if we need, are we in need of one like that for the United Way right now? Do we have a current MOU for all of this work, or is that a need that we have?
I can speak to that. So we are, we have an approved MOU from September that was board-approved in September of 2022 for the federal grant. And we do have one that will, an MOU that we will be bringing to the board for January. So we've had the opportunity to really read through the MOU and make sure that it clearly delineates the responsibilities of United Way, similar to what we saw in the presentation. So it's very clear what WUSD team does, what United Way does, and get that clear before we would bring that to trustees for approval. So we are in the works, had a great meeting this week, and it'll be on the next meeting, but the next meeting just doesn't happen to be until January 25th.
Okay, thank you.
That includes a data sharing agreement between United Way, the district, and Data for the People for the evaluation as well. And it is, yeah, it's robust, it took a while. So it's like, we do this, and then you do this.
Yes, but it's all in one document. I think that will be very helpful for us to see very clearly for all of these, like, what is the expenditure? How does it work? Because there are two different, okay, thank you. Kobe?
Thank you. That actually was one of my questions, was do we have an MOU in place? And if so, you know, what's the holdup? Because if I were, if I were the United Way, why would I continue to do work without a contract in place telling me this is what is expected, you know, isn't expected? So I could, I fully understand, you know, certainly a hindrance to getting services. Some of the questions have pretty much been answered. You brought up the example of the gift card delivery. It sounded to me like that was kind of frenzied.
Sure, and I mean, that's not really anyone's fault. I would say that I don't think we knew that we were going to or that we could participate, right, in that way. And then when we were invited, it was like, yes, okay, how do we make this happen? And to say now that I'm glad, right? Sometimes like you're forced to do things under pressure. So we put a lot of things in place that will serve us in the future. And, you know, I say, we're here and we have all this support, and we're doing all these things. But when it comes down to it, there's really just three staff that are the main go-tos to show up. But we've had many more of our staff come in, and my team's really cool, and they'll do stuff, and that's amazing. For example, this one, another team member came. So it is that where we want to be as responsive and supportive as possible. Sometimes it comes down to just physical manpower to do that.
And I think being cognizant of that is important for our staff to be, you know, you know, and that's what I hope has been established since this incident is. Because I don't want, I don't want to have us have a great idea and say, hey, you guys do this, and you guys are always going to want to say, yeah, of course we want to do that. Like, we want to help this community. But then not to be able to deliver because you're in a time. So I hope that protocols have been put in place, like, hey, can you give us two weeks? Or can you give us, you know, this amount of time so we can deliver? You know, that's, that's basically what I heard that kind of example, my wheels got turning. It sounds like there's, you know, protocols that need to be in place.
We definitely do, and I'll own the tardiness of the request. And also, I think we have so many events happening in Washington Unified all the time that my dream is to have a calendar of all of them so that we could plan out in accordance how we can show up at all the different spaces for our community and that, I'll work on that in my spare time.
And so maybe we can go in advance.
Exactly.
That's helpful as well. You know, of course, this is, you know, community schools is something that I really truly believe in because I would have been one of those kids that benefited a great deal from this as, you know, a child that lived with a single mom who had addiction issues. And we were in severe poverty and, you know, had, you know, food insecurity. So this would have greatly benefited me, and I can understand how, you know, many of the kids at these schools are just going to be thriving off of some of the programs that we're providing with them. The only concern that I have is, I don't know how if I'm going to articulate, is if there's a position, like, I'll just take it for example, the YCCA liaison position. We have, you know, home-to-school liaisons, we have outreach coordinator, our outreach specialists. Can some of that work, the YCCA liaisons do, be done by that staff? Can it be a situation where YCCA maybe trains our staff so we can build this into our budget for creating these positions or having these positions be, you know, CSCA positions in perpetuity? So it's built into our own budget. You know, I can understand having, you know, these expenditures as a YCCA position for a short term, but not on.
And that's key to sustainability, absolutely, as you're speaking to. And so I know in conversations with CSCA and with our team that a lot of the times, our staff is, as you spoke about Ashraf, and our incredible outreach team is already doing a lot of this work. A lot of it is the service of YCCA being able to actually in real time see approvals submitted into the actual like state system. And so it would require a little bit of training, and I think we had that conversation with CSCA and with our team. And so the proposal was to try to have a YCCA person who could be here in the short term to be able to provide that because we know our families need it now. And then what would it look like to, in the long term, train our staff to be able to do that? And then maintain that relationship with YCCA because we send them an enormous amount of referrals, right? And so we want to be able to make it work in the long term, so absolutely.
I have a side note to that too, and thinking of previous roles and experience as a direct service provider, that when everybody's at capacity, an idea like this where it's like, bring more information and resources to the site, you as a service provider not at the school may go, well, that's just going to turn into more referrals for us, with people walking in and we're already at capacity. well, that's just going to turn into more referrals for us, people walking in and we're already at capacity. So what if we can go there and help out on the site, cut out that revolving door, maybe even though we are part of the community? And I didn't work at YCCA, I'm sort of speaking for them. But I think to YCCA probably would, again, I'm not them, be open to a training, but they would need also to be compensated for their time for the training and support of the staff to do that.
Yeah. I mean, well, it says it's already going to be, they're already going to be supported. They're already going to be compensated for. It says liaison position partial.
Oh, that was part of the plans, part of the hopeful plans. Yes.
Right. No, I get that. No, that's what I'm saying. I'm saying, I'm saying this now so we can implement into the future as projecting my future me saying, hey, can we make sure we do this?
It's both things, right?
Sustainability, right?
Long-term sustainability and what do our families need right now? Right? As both. Yeah.
And then my last question is, I heard a comment about a resource room at Riverbank. So there's computers and things. The only question is, I'm trying to think about this. Do community members or parents or guardians come on the school during school hours to use that?
They, they do, but they come in through, the only way to access it is through the, is through the main office as it sign in, as you would in any other sort of like check in to come in. And then they're able to.
And do they have to be a parent? Or a guardian?
I.
I mean, that gives me a little bit of pause. Like, I mean, are they, what's the security from that aspect?
As far as I know, the security looks exactly like it looks for anybody that's coming onto our campus where they're checking in at the main office and they're signing in and they're doing that and they're able to come in. And so Ashraf has not reported that there's been anybody coming in random from the community. And it's been, it's been parents that are waiting to pick up their kids and, and whatnot. So.
But there's never a problem until there's a problem, right? And that's, that's, that's my only thought.
We can speak to that at any of our sites, right?
So I'm thinking, because one of the things that we, we really want to highlight, especially in this first year, as we're learning and doing all of this together, we've had a lot of conversation about collecting data. And so maybe one of the questions or things to get information is when we have visitors signing in, is it, there's, are you a parent? Are you a community? Like we'll have some data to be able to know who's coming on the campus and what is, you know, their role.
And during which times of day.
Right. Collecting what time they come in because, you know, now if you come in as a visitor, it is, you know, who are you here to see? You're here to see your parent. You have a conference. What, what is it? Are people putting on there? They're going to the community's resource room? Just, you know, the questions really help us think about what data we want to gather to know where do we need to modify a system that's already in place or to create a system that we don't necessarily already have.
I, so from that aspect, I'm, I'm less concerned about data in as much as I am about traffic. And if there's an increase, even if it's parent, doesn't matter if it's a community member or if it's more parent. From that aspect, you have more traffic. And that tends to make me feel like you're jeopardizing the safety of our kids. If there's more traffic, because we don't know necessarily, you know, what could potentially, right? It, it's the things that there's never a problem until there is. And so from that aspect.
Sorry, I thought you were going to ask another question because I was thinking this made me think about. Well, it made me think about River City High School because right now they have the new system where when you sign in, they run like your driver's license. And so they run a report and then if you are flagged in any systems and they know immediately. So I'm just thinking, maybe that would be a system that community school funding at the sites where we're going to have others. Maybe that would be a good tool. We already have it in place at a school.
And I mean, would that be something that our grant would pay for?
We could certainly look into it and talk over, talk it over with our business and our facilities team and see.
Right? Yeah, for sure. All right. That's all I have.
All right. You were bringing up Riverbank. I know Riverbank. I go to Riverbank every day picking up my kids. My question, one of my questions is what time is the resource open for parents? Is it before school? Is it after, during school? Is it after school? Up until what time after school? You have Kid Zone, you have Club West, you have all of these things that are coming in and out. They actually have to call beforehand and they open the gate for those for parents to come in and sign before we are allowed to leave our, you know, get our kids. When it's after school and their resource room is behind the gate, school's closed, the doors open, how do the parents get there if there's no way to get in unless you could throw a bag over and, you know, hit the gate and open it that way? But then that's not really what we want, right? So I'm looking at it. Access is definitely not. I mean, the community room is not really accessible during certain times if you have gates that are closed.
Sure. And that's something we could certainly talk about. The, the facilitator positions, their hours were written as intentionally flexible so that they could potentially do that. So if it was something where Ashraf came in at 10 and stayed, you know, and advertised that it was open two hours later in the, in the evening or something like that, that we could look at that. I think all of, I don't want to speak for all of them, but I think all of them would probably be pretty amenable to that in terms of, and it just would be a matter of telling our families and coming up with the process and procedure for how families would access it and what that would look like.
Cause I'm just curious to know, like how, like I don't see signs of when the hours are. Like I said, I'm there picking up my kids pretty frequently and sporadic hours. Sometimes it's 3:30, sometimes it's five, sometimes exactly at six. You know, because that's the latest you can pick up your kids. And there's times that door is open and there's times the door is closed. So and there's no real like, hey, we have a community school. This is where it's at the resource. And I do look in often and I'm wondering what's going on. I haven't gone inside. I say, I just look in. And I'm not seeing much foot traffic during the afternoon. So I'm wondering if that's the case, not much foot traffic at, in the afternoon or, you know, in the evening time. Is it more during the day? Do you guys collect data of when people are coming in? What are they asking? Could we kind of get that information of like, you know, of when things are happening? So we kind of have an idea.
Yes, he's keeping all, I think as far as I know, all of them are keeping track of who's coming in and what they're asking for so that we can get those numbers of what are pieces of clothing we're giving out and hygiene kits and, and resources that we've given. So that's absolutely.
So you guys have like an inventory of what's coming in and then what's going out and then what's being replenished? And like how many kids that are picking up at the store?
Yes.
I like that. I think that's, I'm like, hey, let's go to the store. Are your kids going to the store? My kid went to the store because I wouldn't give him his sweater. I didn't take him for a sweater and he needed that sweater. And so they took him to the store. And he was like, Mom, I got, I got a, I got a sweater. You wouldn't give me a sweater. So they gave me a sweater. And I'm like, it's not that I didn't give you one. I said, think about, you, you have everything before you leave because we're not coming, going back and you forgot your sweater. It's not my fault. Resource room. So, but yeah, so anyway, so it would be great to have that, that data to kind of understand when it's happening at different sites. If it's more kids, if it's more adults, if it's, I mean, I know we're, we don't collect the data of adults that are parents versus resource, like when you go check in, you say, who are you here for? What are you here for? Here to pick up my kid, so on and so forth. But it doesn't say I'm here for the resource. I mean, I don't think it says I'm here for the resource center. It's just checking in who's on campus.
And that's something certainly when the next time I have us all together, I can say, what does the traffic look like during the day? And we can kind of brainstorm some of that and they can talk with their individual teams at each site to kind of say, how can we make it more accessible so that more families can come?
And it would also be good to know, you mentioned the YCCA referrals, like, well, how many referrals are we giving out that we're extending over there? It would be really helpful information to, is it five a day? Is it five a week? Or is it five a month? Because we can say we're doing it, but what is the actual numbers that we're doing it to justify the reason why we are bringing that onto our sites?
And I think the cross data with YCCA of those referrals, how many of them follow up at YCCA to actually receive the services? And so what does that gap look like as well?
Some of the other things that, that you, that you guys also mentioned, like we did a lot of planning, the planning grant. Can we see that report of like, what was the actually like the vision of what it was going to be? Because I don't think I ever really saw it. Maybe it was sent in an email. I don't know, but I would love to know what it was that the vision was in the beginning. So that way, since that was all of last year's planning, what are we doing in our goals as you guys have already saying, hey, in the midst, in the, in the now, we said we were going to do this. So last year, this is what our plan was. Are we on track? So it would be good for us to also be able to follow that track in those methods. Accountability, transparency, definitely something that that I like to see. Sorry, I got, I had a lot of questions as you were going through. So, but a lot of questions were definitely answered. So I appreciate that. One of the things that you mentioned on one of your, on one of your slides is processes needed for assessment. You were doing one-on-ones. You were conducting interviews with nonprofit partners and key administrators, one-on-ones. Do we get a list of who you've talked to and contacts? Could we get that? Like, these are who we've actually talked to.
Part of the planning grant process. So not to say that we don't need to continue to do those, but there was a very concerted effort in a period of time where our team did a lot of interviews or our one person did a lot of interviews as part of putting together this plan. And so, yes, we have.
And a lot of that was written into the CDE grants. So we can certainly get that.
So all of those one-on-ones were done during the planning phase?
During planning.
Okay. So then, since the planning phase, have they said, yes, we're, we were, we're interested in doing this? Or that was just like, we talked to them where they were interested?
The nonprofits, you mean? Yeah, that, that slide that shows a lot of our, we have, we have consistently people saying, hey, want to be in this? I mean, bless, who is it? David Lindberger? Yola Help, he is constantly like, hey, when can I come? When can I, hey, remember me? Like, let's, let's.
Partner Palooza thing.
Oh yeah. We did a Partner Palooza day where we just had kind of like speed dating with different partner organizations that just came in and said, here's what we could do for your community schools.
Five minutes.
Exactly. And they pitched us and we had the whole team there to listen and say, okay, we like this. We like this after school programs, an array of things. And so, yes, we've had, we have, we have more community organizations than we can fund and ever have time for. So that's a good.
Well, that's good.
Yes.
So then I guess if I get a copy of the planning grant, then I'll be able to answer a lot of my questions to be able to follow your guys' processes. Will this planning grant also include deadlines of when things are supposed to be met? So we don't miss anything. And if it doesn't, could we get that as separate of like, this is when this report is due. This is when we need to do this. This is when this needs to be done. So we're not missing any deadlines. And so we can also help make sure that things are, I'm not one who likes to be in the nitty gritty. But with this being the community and the community involvement, I like to make sure that we're all on the same page and we're following the process. So is that?
The federal and the state have both have, both have time. We know the deadlines and then we back, we're back planning with, as a team to be able to say, okay, now we need, you know, six weeks to be able to do this and this. And so we're.
You know, the deadlines now, but before you, we missed one. So that's why I'm asking.
I can speak to that.
Thank you.
Sure. Yeah. So that was the planning grant.
Okay.
And what transpired was I do know the staff member that left was listed as the primary contact, sorry, from Washington, not United Way. Okay. Because the planning grant was held by Washington. So whoever got, that person, I think, got the notice that the report was due and.
It didn't go anywhere else.
And it didn't go anywhere else. And so we followed up on a number of occasions with our contact at the state and didn't get responses from them. And then on one occasion, they did say yes and sent us the report. We had the report done. We had all the data done in May. So we finished it in two days and submitted it. So no, there was no penalty. It was just a requirement where the person was sort of doing a fair by saying, hey, you guys ever submitted, sorry, hey, Washington, you never submitted the thing? And we were like, yes, we got you. We will do it.
And it was a two-year grant, which we did in one year. So technically it was not due for another year.
Okay. So in the, but there were still some, go ahead.
But when we turned it in, we corrected the contact information.
Perfect. There we go. So we made sure and not be missing that.
For the implementation grant, again, it's going to be Washington staff listed and we just got notification that you can add additional fiscal and programmatic people. And so we're adding some of our folks too, as like third and fourth backups.
Perfect. Yeah. So the community school budget summary of all the pie charts.
Yeah.
It says that you guys, you mentioned it and I, I'm, I know you're not a, a, a budget person or you said financial, financial person, at least that's what you said. And I'm not one who really understands too much of what exactly we're trying to do. I, I heard you say matching funds. Where are the funds coming from exactly? Like when we match them? I think you kind of mentioned it a little bit with.
Yeah. So it would be reflected in, if in the grant we submitted, we said 20% or 10% of the chief of, the chief program officer's time is included in our fee for service. And then all of the time above and beyond that, that 10% or that 20% that is allocated, all of that is considered matched. Because we're not going back and saying, hey, actually you need to pay me for all the time I actually did on the grant, above and beyond what was assigned. And then there's like, I've been mentioning a plethora of other team members. If we're just talking about staff, team members are not included in the grant at all, but that contribute to our organizational capacity to support it. So finance, we don't list the finance people there, but they have a huge responsibility with us and the fiscal management, the data, our data person as well, our, our CEO, as well as our policy and advocacy person, the grant writer, the fee to write the grant. So none of that is included.
So no staff or administrators or money's coming from the grant? Is that what I'm understanding?
Yes, staff support for the project is.
Oh, it is coming from?
Percentage, yes. And it's, it's our, it's our combined fee for service for supporting the project. What I'm saying is beyond that is more than just that, more than what we are going to say part of our partnership, more than what we keep from the federal and more than what we're hopefully going to contract through, through the MOU for, with the district for the CDE grant. Above and beyond that is additional support from, from United Way and the staff time. And additionally, the federal grant is also viewed as match for the state grant. So some of the stability of the state grant and why they would look favorably upon that project was because we had the federal grant.
Okay. I'm going to go ahead and request that I get a training on what exactly is being said because I'm 100% can say that I don't understand.
Okay.
Just letting you know.
Yes.
So if I can get that on the side, I would appreciate it because I'm trying to grasp my head around it and I'm not fully understanding the money piece.
I think, I think a, like a tangible way of thinking about it. So like with the state grant, so with any grant, they, they say that you have to have, you, you have to be giving something towards this initiative. Also, like, we're going to give you all this money, but what are you doing on your end to be able to match what we're doing? And there's, it's usually a percentage of the entire amount that they're giving you. So for instance, for our CDE grant, we were able to say, you know what? We have match funds that are going towards community schools through our ELOP funding or through the sites that we're offering or through the, you know, like through the, the physical spaces. So that's the, the, what we're putting into the pot to be able to make this initiative work with this grant as well. So the match is kind of like what you're, what you're willing to put in to make the initiative work as well.
Still would like that.
But we will. We will make that happen as we have done with other things.
Yes.
Just so it's very clear.
Help me to feel good about what you're telling me. So that way I won't be like, so what does that mean again? That's kind of where I'm at right now. And so good to know that we're, I, I put a lot in here, like collect data, collect data. And that is pretty much my, pretty much my questions. My last, actually one last question. Your project evaluation, you have these, these, these questions that you're asking, like the goals and whatnot. You said, right now we're on questions one and two, right? What needs and goals do the community schools aim to meet? Was that not part of the planning phase? Aren't we now in the implementation portion?
We are. I think, I think that what we were trying to say is these are the eight questions in totality that you can ask. And so at different times, we're asking different questions. And so, yes, we have needs and goals, but they will change as our community changes. So the needs and goals we have right now might not necessarily. So the needs and goals we have right now might not necessarily be the same next year. And so it's an ongoing process of asking the community and seeing if that aligns with what we are providing.
So between the planning grant of last year, when we asked, what were the needs? And now, have they truly changed that much? Cause it, I thought it was the, we were doing the food banks and whatnot. Was that not part of the initial like planning part of it?
It was, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. And then last one, now I promise this one is my last one because I, that triggered another question. I know that's how my brain works. I'm so sorry. These events that we, that you've been invited to, and I know there's a lot of them. And like we said, that's just a huge calendar of them. Besides asking, uh, like two weeks in advance or three weeks, because the last one was three weeks and it was kind of, you were frantic, right? How much time do you need in advance? And are you, like the city has a bunch, do they not have a calendar that they can maybe provide you of like, hey, this is what we're doing? Um, or YCCA, I know they have the food bank and they do distributions for food. Do you guys provide that information to your families, um, that are in the communities? Like all of these things that are happening all over. The fact that there's a food bank here at City Hall on Saturdays. The fact that there's a food bank over there on Friday or Fridays over at, close to Riverbank. The fact that there's a, and I get the text messages of when they're happening and where they're happening and at what time. Cause I am one of those families.
Yes. Our, each facilitator puts out like a, in October, here's like a menu of different things that are happening that you can also, and I know the, the text, you know, code for the yellow food bank is on there and different events that are happening or come, you know, CSAD does, each school has kind of a different way of how they distribute if it's a Sunday night thing or if it's a weekly thing. But each site is keeping up with it on a monthly basis. But I think that comprehensively in West Sacramento, we could probably do a much better job of letting everyone know of all the different things that are happening. I, I am new to the community, so I'm always like, oh, we're doing that. Okay, here we go. Like, and, and Jay is great about at the beginning of the year, seeing here are all the dates. It just comes in tandem with lots of other things that are happening. If the church invites us and then this place invites us, and then it just ends up being, you know, a lot of places to go. And, and thankfully we have a large enough team that we've been able to make it to every single thing.
And I also wonder, cause you had said this on, for the, it's, we're still TBD on how to work with them because it could be countries, it could be, but it needs to be community. So like you as a parent who, but like, would you, like, how would you like that to show up? Like as part of a community school? I mean, yeah, I'm not like, not, not. I was like, well, I like the drive-through one. Yeah. And I say that because of the fact that I don't have to carry it for very long.
Yes.
But I know a lot of family members that don't have a car. And so they'll drive up and walk up ones. If it's at the school site, then it becomes, do you have perishable items? Or are you just having canned items? Because if you're just going to have canned items, I'm good because I don't, don't care too much for canned. I'd rather have, I like the fresh veggies and the fruits and that type of thing. So what is it?
They gave us that, you can have a market, you can have perishable, you can have this. They, they literally gave us like this entire, all the different things.
There's five different things.
Yeah.
I was like, so yeah. I'm, I need, that's what I'm saying. That's why I said those are five different options that you can do. And that was it. Sorry, um, that's all I got. Anybody else? Okay. Oh yeah, that's right. Okay. So thank you on that. I think that was it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, it did get hot.
I know it's a little early for this, but I don't think we're going to make the 10 o'clock deadline. So how about I make a motion now to extend past 10?
That was my question. Are there, just, um, is there a process maybe, um, for making some change? We've already, you know, approved the agenda, but there are some things that are not necessarily time sensitive. But.
We can table a discussion. I, I know that staff have been here.
Yeah.
And I also know the interim needs to get passed.
Yeah.
So that's what I know as a piece of business we need to do. Yeah. What is your recommendation?
What is your recommendation?
So my recommendation is if we will have, uh, item N2, um, table for this meeting.
Oh, wait a minute.
Wait, 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 no, 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 no. Wait, wait, wait.
Jenna's like, I'm okay.
Right? You had to swap out kids, like. Yeah. Yeah, no, no.
Okay. Okay. So what, is there anything else then? Or we're good then?
Then, because after that, we go to consent and then it is. And then the, the action, the first action is our interim. So that it would be the next major thing that has, it's time sensitive.
Can I make, can I make a suggestion that we forego our superintendent and board comments? Cause we have to go back into closed session.
Yeah.
And so that.
So I still make a motion that we extend past 10 because it will.
Okay. So. Motion. But. Fazadi, second. Okay. All. On favor, on favor. Okay. So now we're going past 10.
Yeah.
Okay. And so now going back to N2 update.
On Jenna.
Oh wait, there's something else?
No, Jenna's up.
All right.
Jenna.
Yeah.
Jenna's up.
Ms. Jenna.
Ms. Kassanis.
I was like, update on the diverse educators and aspiring leaders.
Are you still Roski?
And we are inviting. Farah Obaydula.
I said it right? I was like, that was good.
Good evening, President Coffey, Dr. Hildreth, trustees, members of the community and the rest of the, uh, Washington Unified Family. We are very excited. I know it's very late. Thank you so much, everyone, for waiting. But we are very excited to be here tonight to talk about the diverse educator and aspiring leaders program that was approved last year. It has truly been wonderful to see the vision come to life and our, uh, first year participants from both programs to utilize all of the incentives that the program had to offer and the services. I'm joined here with our HR TOSA, who's done a phenomenal job in taking the lead in both of these programs, building partnership with universities, helping our, our participants navigate through the credentialing program and helping them obtain those credentialing programs, become successful, building relationships with their colleagues, teachers, administrators, all members of the community and the school. And, um, also, um, organizing the leadership series, inviting, talking to, uh, our presenters, talking about all of the topics and the skills that leaders must know and learn. And so, um, what we'll do today, uh, next slide, please, Mario. We want to be able to give you an overview and update of the entire program. We will quickly talk about the purpose and as it aligns with our strategic plan. We will talk about, very quickly summarize the components of what each program, um, was and what those incentives were, what those services were, as well as what were our, um, expectations of our, um, our participants. We will then take a quick moment to highlight celebrations, um, and successes. We want to talk about what have, what are some of the things that we've learned as we've gone through our first year of this program? And what are things that are, we're going to keep in mind as we're going through the next year in this program with our participants and what services we need to focus on more. Uh, we will talk about, uh, the budget and give you a quick update of the budget. And, uh, lastly, we will talk about next steps. Before we go into our presentation, we want to be able to share a very quick two-minute video of our participants and, um, from both programs. And they're talking about their experiences as they've gone through this program.
So last year, I had the wonderful opportunity of applying for the aspiring leaders program here at WUSD. It's a program where our district decided they wanted to promote within. They wanted people who were loyal and dedicated to this district to actually have growth opportunities in this district so that we did not go out to other districts and we could, um, have that institutional knowledge that we built as teachers. And the way the HR department supported me with my unique role is I actually had a meeting and I was able to talk about what my goals were, uh, what my dream job looked like, what needs I saw being a teacher in the district for the last 10 years. The diverse educators program is for people who are from a diverse ethnic background. I started subbing in the district and I was really just like, is this what I'm supposed to be doing? And this program actually came around at like the perfect time. And I was like, making that decision. It's like, okay, I kind of can see myself doing this full-time, but the commitment of going back to school is just really hard. Financially, um, scheduling-wise, like you still have to make a living. And I was actually talking around, I was like, it would be great if like, maybe the district paid for it. That'd be super cool. And then like a couple of weeks later, here comes this program. So having the HR department assist me with this has been extremely helpful. Having an HR department help you out is just, they know like the exact way to do things, the exact way to run things. So having that support has been a huge help. I mean, it feels great to know that the HR is supporting growth within your district. So as someone that did come from another district, uh, moving into Washington Unified School District, has been, like to say life-changing, I know that sounds very extreme, but this is my career. Oh, I love my district. You're going to love my district. Come over here, come join us. We, we care about children. We want to serve children. And if you have a heart to do that, we're the place for you.
Thank you. So with that, I will go ahead and pass it on to Ms. Roski. She will talk to you about the program and give you the updates.
Thank you. I'm glad you didn't, um, skip me either, only partly because I'm sure you all saw my kids here tonight. I don't want to have to bring them back. They were very excited to come, but it's bedtime. So anyway, thank you again, um, for having me. My name is Jenna Roski. I'm a teacher on special assignment, so TOSA and Human Resources. This is my 14th year in the district, uh, in a few different roles. So I'm excited to be part of this program. It's been a really fun start to your, this goes down anymore. Okay. So we just want to go through quickly a little bit of what we presented actually last year. This is a really quick recap. So again, our goal is to recruit a more diverse workforce. We all know there's a teacher shortage right now. We're trying to address that. And then also, um, from our employees right now, we want to provide leadership opportunities so they can grow. Did I say slide? Thank you. As in anything we do, we want to make sure it aligns to our strategic plan. And we have very clear goals in there to again, um, look for those educators that do reflect the diversity of our students and also to promote from within and, um, to grow our own employees. So, um, we're going to do a little, again, very quick recap on what the programs both look like, what the components are and kind of what progress we've made. So, um, if you'll notice, the diverse educators program is in green and the aspiring leaders is in purple. My brain thinks that way. Hopefully it helps you track. So for the diverse educator program, this is to help, um, people who are getting their first credential. So it could be our classified staff, our community members, substitutes, but this is for their very first teaching credential. Washington Unified provides financial incentives. So up to 80% of the cost of their tuition, different incentives for hard-to-fill credentials and for diverse experience, uh, monthly allowances for living within our boundaries. And then, um, also the support from my role as the HR TOSA being in their classrooms and, um, making sure they feel like they're part of our community. And then our aspiring leader programs, again, there's a financial support aspect, um, to support that tuition piece. And then, um, the second part, which is the second year of this, is to attend the WSD Leadership Training Series, which is presented by our very own WSD administrators. And there's six sessions every year. And it talks a little bit about the requirements for people going into admin credential programs. Not our requirements, it's the state licensing. You didn't think you'd be flipping through so quick, huh? Yeah, we're going. So the leadership training series, like I said, that's the part two of the aspiring leaders program. It's also open to all Washington Unified staff members, so classified, certificated administrators. And we've even had some substitutes express interest. So they're paid extra hours on a time sheet, dinners provided and topics are selected, both based on needs. Um, I really looked at what do I wish I had known as a first-year assistant principal? And then also, um, the feedback that we got from people, what do you wish you'd like? What, what do you wish you knew about the district? And when we advertise, we're careful to say, this doesn't have to be just people looking to go into administration. It's anybody who wants to learn more about the district and leadership roles in a lot of different capacities. Okay. So we do want to look at the timelines a little bit. Um, the top timelines, the top table is what we had looked at and what we had presented last year when it first came. And then the second table is what we're actually seeing. The goal last year, when we first advertised, was to bring candidates in who were in credential programs. And then the goal would be that they finished last year and then they start this year for the diverse educator program. We advertised almost as soon as it was board approved. We interviewed, we, um, sent acceptance letters, but the majority of people were actually not in credential programs yet. They, and I mean, it makes sense, right? Cause if you're looking for a financial incentive to, um, apply to a credential program, you may not have the access to that credential program unless you have the, um, the financial support. So we do see the majority of our candidates are in the credential program this year. And then some of them are interns, so we do have them in classroom assignments, some are student teachers. And then, um, the goal is for them to be hired next year. Same thing for the aspiring leaders program. Again, we thought we would get more candidates who are already in admin programs, um, but the majority of them, it was about 50/50. We have three of them who are completing credential programs this year and three that completed their credential programs last year. So they were a little bit more split. Okay. The best part is celebrating successes. This, we do have a lot to celebrate. We're about four months into our official first year, but here we go. Um, and these are pictures of people in our program. We did receive permission first. So our goal is to accept about 10 participants a year. So it's a three-year program. Our goal is for 30 participants. Last year, we had a really big initial interest and so we accepted 13. They were all phenomenal. But, you know, life circumstances, different circumstances, um, not all of them could continue in the program. So we are down to nine. So one of those finished their credential last year and eight are in the programs right now. Of that, again, one of our goals was to meet the hard-to-fill credentials. So we have, um, two special education credentials that they're getting right now. And then we have a single subject math and then we have the other ones that you see there, which are also very valuable and we're very excited about. Teacher shortages are across the board. Okay. So, um, again, I'll go through this quickly. Part of my role is to provide that support to our diverse educators, um, as they are student teaching or intern teaching in our district. Like I said, I've been a teacher. I went through the program at Sac State 14 years ago. And, um, I floated through the program as a student teacher. I knew my resident teacher. I had one principal who stopped by a couple of times and checked on me. I got a nickname from him, but you know, besides that, I didn't know anybody in the district. I didn't know what a district was or what it meant to be part of it. So when I went and looked for a job, I applied everywhere. I interviewed down, I think in like Livermore or something, um, because I didn't know where to go. I just knew I lived in this area. So we really want to invest in our participants so that they want to stay in Washington Unified, that they know that they have a system of support here. They know who they can access if they need resources. So I do classroom observations, which are my favorite part because I get to be with the kids. I get to see the teaching and I get to see the teachers grow. And I've seen so much growth already in four months. So it's really exciting. I meet with them, I meet with their universities. And then I get to help connect them to resources for their classroom assignments or for the lessons that they're teaching, to make sure they're as successful as they can be. Okay. For aspiring leaders, um, kind of the same thing. It's a lot of relationship building, meeting with them. Hey, what are you looking into? How can I support you? Like I said, we do already have a few, a few of them in admin roles this year. So we have two of them are assistant principals and two are coordinators this year. And then we have two that are in their certificated roles in the district while they're completing their credential programs. But again, the goal is to build those relationships to provide any support. Um, and as you're experiencing a, um, the idea of pursuing admin credentials, what jobs are out there? What might be the best fit for me? It's not, there's not only site administration, there's different leadership roles. So having those conversations. Okay. So, um, again, part two of the aspiring leader program. Okay, so, um, again, part two of the aspiring leader program is this Leadership Training Series. Um, and at the beginning of the year, I was thinking, okay, we, uh, we are guaranteed to have a couple of aspiring leader candidates there. If we get five other people, I'm going to be so excited. And then, um, we sent out the RSVP and I was completely blown away. Um, the first series, the first session, I should say, we had 69 staff members across the district sign up to attend, um, which included 24 classified, 33 certificated, um, substitutes, management confidential. For the next session, we had even more. And then for our session in January, we've had to close RSVP because we're over 80 responses and the NPR just will not fit anybody. And I'd love to take credit, but I am not presenting at these sessions. Um, our first session was Executive Cabinet and I think Dr. Hildreth celebrated this a couple of weeks ago. And they talked about what their, um, leadership journeys looked like, what their career pathways were and what advice they had for future leaders, um, which was so valuable because I didn't even know. But all of our Executive Cabinet members came from such different paths. It wasn't just straightforward. I taught for 20 years. I was assistant principal. I was a principal. I was a director. I was, you know, it was, um, anyway, completely different pathways. So it was very valuable. Um, Carla Salvo, uh, presented in November on our special education program, what an IEP was, what a 504 is, and then really made it personal for the attendees of how can you in whatever role you're in, support our kids with special needs. Um, so our feedback has been very positive. We always have, you know, ways to grow, of course. This is our first year. Um, but we've, we've heard that the sessions are valuable. They're learning more about the inner workings of the district and oh, I didn't know that about special ed. Um, but also we're assigning table groups, because I'm a teacher, at heart. And so, um, we mix up the table groups with people in different job classifications, different work locations. So they're having really productive conversations with different perspectives that they haven't heard from before. Um, and you know, I was, I apologize every, at the beginning of every session, sorry, I gave you table assignments. And that has been, um, the feedback coming back after both sessions so far. We love being with the, with different people and hearing from them. Um, so we're going to continue that. We are, like I said, we are full for that next session, but you're welcome to come if you want to. It's going to be in the multipurpose room. Um, we had Greek food last time, so we're going to go somewhere else. But, um, it's a very, it's a very great experience. I know. It's delicious. Okay. Um, so we do have some things that we've learned so far this year. And again, this is our first year of the program, um, but some feedback we've received. Uh, one of the things, you know, I've completed a credential program, right? And so I, in my head, know kind of what I went through, but it was 14 years ago. Um, the people that are applying for this program, um, it's their first time applying to a credential program. And a lot of them are further along in their career paths and this is kind of a second career for them. Some of them are brand new out of school. And so one of the feedback that we got is, you know, yes, I signed up for the diverse educator program. I was so excited about the financial incentives, but I wish I had heard more emphasis on make sure you finish your prerequisites before July. Because, um, you know, unfortunately, if you don't pass, you don't get into a credential program. Um, there was, there was some leeway during COVID, but that's gone now. Um, and so that is something we're going to emphasize with this next group, um, as we accept them in December of, hey, please make sure you make a point to go take those C sets in, in January. Because if you fail, you have to wait 45 days before you take it again. Um, so that was really helpful and a good reminder for me. Again, I haven't been there for a while. Um, and then we needed more advertisement. Very few people knew about it in time for the application period last year. Um, so we made a point this year to flood information. Um, we sent emails to all, um, listservs for staff or community members. We delivered flyers at every school site and brochures. Um, we did the Q and A sessions again and they were really well attended. Um, and then I know he left already, but I want to thank our CSCA president because he not only mentioned it and promoted it at one of his members' meetings, but he actually asked if he could, um, co-host a separate virtual Q and A. And we did that just for CSCA to say, hey, this is what the options are for both programs. Um, and then here's what, you know, here's some other resources. If you haven't gotten your bachelor's yet, here's some grants that are available to you right now to help you through that process. Um, so that was really helpful. And then we're considering opening the application period again in the spring because we do understand that some people join our district later and maybe haven't heard about it or missed that one period, um, of application they want to apply again. And so we want to make sure we get as many people as possible, the best candidates. Okay. Hopefully everybody's a little bit sleepy right now. We have a budget update. Um, so, um, we, that, one of the first things we did, I came on in August to be, um, in the TOSA role, was look at the budget and see what are we actually seeing from the candidates that we've accepted into the first cohort versus what we budgeted for. Um, so we did notice that we say, we had some savings in tuition. Some of our candidate, or our participants, I should say, um, have gone through some programs at Sac State where their tuition was fully paid for. So we weren't double paying them for the same cost. Um, so we did save some money there. We also, when we had estimated the fund for tuition, we had looked at a few different programs and costs, um, throughout California, so National, Sac State, UC Davis, and kind of estimated based on the median, but we found most people were going through programs that were less expensive than what we had, um, estimated for each person. Um, we also had some savings with technology. We figured out some ways to reuse some technology and then, um, our hard to fill incentive, because we estimated that for every single candidate. That's our best, um, you know, our highest hopes and not everybody meets that criteria. However, we did find that we have, um, increased costs in a couple of areas. So the exciting part is that, um, we do need more funding for our residence allowance, which means that more of our participants actually live in the Washington Unified boundaries. Um, so when we had calculated it, we kind of put a number there as, um, you know, probably not all of them will live here. Not all of them do, but a lot of them do. So when we're looking for people who are invested in our community, these are people that are in our community. They live here, they know us, they have kids at our schools, um, they've been subbing here, whatever it is. So we, we were excited by that, but it is another cost. And then, um, when the budget was originally brought in October, the TOSA was, um, estimated as 150,000, but over the course of three years, the cost is actually closer to 436,000. So between those two, the, um, overall, and when you take those costs and then the savings, the overall need for additional funding is estimated to be 379,000. Okay, for the aspiring leaders program budget, um, again, we saved in the area of tuition, um, because we had overestimated for tuition. Um, however, the Leadership Training Series, because of the high demand, has been more expensive than we estimated. We had originally budgeted for 40 people at each session. So it is more because we, um, do pay them, um, for that hour and a half that they're there, along with dinner. Um, so that is an increased cost, which, uh, works out to $5,000 extra funding. And I'm sorry, I should, I'm so sorry, Mario. On that slide, I should call out that there was a slight adjustment made to some of the colors in the, um, table. Not the numbers, but just to make it more clear which was savings and which one was an additional cost. Okay, so again, just to summarize, it is a, um, total variance, um, additional cost of 384,000. Um, and it's just the, the big bucket. Okay, so next steps, um, again, we're going to continue looking at, um, the budget as we go. We've seen, this is the, four months in, we've seen some savings. Every year, the cohort's going to look different and we're not entirely sure what their tuition will look like. We don't anticipate their tuition being more expensive than what is in our new estimated budget because we overestimated. Um, so we're hoping that we see more savings. Um, but it'll depend on what, where the cohort comes from. And then, um, we will come back in January to make a recommendation regarding the need for additional funding and we'll continue to look at the effectiveness of the program to see if we are meeting the needs, um, of our students and the needs, um, of the program when we originally brought it. That is it. I forgot to set my timer, but it was a little bit longer than I anticipated.
Kristy, if anybody has any questions, we are here to answer.
Do we have any public comments? All right. Board, does anybody have any questions or comments?
Just really exciting and thank you for staying late. Um, so, um, so I would love to see your kids again, but totally understand they're a little, they were rolling around. Um, just, uh, again, excited. I know that we're, we're facing a budget. I mean, we're about to talk about the interim in a second. They really would like us to think about, encourage, continue this program, growing your own. Right? Giving especially those who, um, get the incentive to finish school and all that. Uh, we've heard from our, uh, labor partners that this has been a phenomenal thing for their employees. So I just wanted to kind of make that comment. Um, and plant a, a different seed. I noticed that, uh, I love the fact that many of them are, are within our district boundaries and that that's a cost overrun. Um, not necessarily in this budget, but it'd be really great to think about, um, because this, you know, I went to a session at CSBA. Is to, we have a lot of land. How do we actually build housing for our, um, our teachers and our staff? Um, that is affordable because again, we know that a lot of people from Bay are coming here, driving up the cost. We, we heard it from our staff earlier. Um, and so just again, that's outside, something like that. Without, that was a cost overrun that came out. I'm like, okay, how do we better incentivize and kind of think about livability? Again, not this program and I'm going on a tangent because it's late, but really just grateful that you all took a chance, um, and expanded it to PPS and other credentials. Um, and opened up to classified. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah. Is this on?
Yes.
Awesome. Um, no, thank you for the presentation. Um, I'm always going to, to bring it up, but just thinking, um, all of this, we're finding out after, you know, today we saw a lot of community members, um, that are from here and are part of this and it's incredible to see. Um, so just how do we get, even with our, with our, um, senior tutors, our student tutors that were, that are interested in, in, in potentially being educators, just always think of a component uh, to engage our seniors and our juniors who, who may even have a sister or brother that already graduated and they're talking about careers. Um, you know, when it comes to education, I know in many of our families, it, it, it's, it's a proud thing to say, you know, my, my son, my daughter works at this school or helps people out, you know, in this way. So just always, how do we get that engagement, um, from our, uh, our students now? Um, which can just create a future pipeline in a sense, um, to engage them in the work now. So that's all I would ask is, is to, to always put that in, um, in any project that we're doing, um, engaging our, our seniors and juniors into this.
Thank you.
Um, this presentation was so well done. Thank you. Um, and I think one reason, you know, the last one, there were questions about money and I'm confused by it. It's because there was pie charts without like the numbers and this just had the numbers on everything. It was so easy to break down, including your trainings, not just how many people came, but then you really broke it all down. So it was just a beautiful, um, presentation and it's such exciting work. It gave me goosebumps because this is what, um, I, I can't imagine how, um, it, we could impact public education if this was happening all across our state. I mean, this, the work that you are doing is really leading the way in the region and it's really exciting. Um, and I love it. And so, um, the more we can go and support people, um, I think that this is, this is a key, um, piece, I think, of our budget and it's proving it. Um, I hope the data continues to show some retention with it as well. Um, and then thinking about the piece that we can do on our end, maybe on a two-by-two meeting, having a conversation to at the city about our apartments and housing and how we could maybe look at, uh, working with them to say, could a percentage of this apartment building also be for Washington Unified staff? Um, too. So maybe there's some options there as well, but thank you.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I would echo her comments about presentation was very succinct and to the point and easy to follow and, you know, easy to understand. So thank you. Secondarily, I am a very big believer in grow your own. And this is a grow your own program and I love it. Absolutely love it. My concern is keep your own. So how do we prevent us growing somebody? Right? That's my only concern. Like, we could, we could, and it's, I don't want to get into negotiations, but I've heard the calls that other districts pay more, right? They're attracting us, our, our staff away for, for, you know, obvious reasons. So I just question, is there any limits or is there, not limits, I shouldn't say limits. Is there any requirements, um, that they have to at least work a, a year in the district if they go through the program?
Yeah, they're actually, um, committing to three years of working in the district after they complete their credential program. So even if they're interning right now, it's three years after that.
Done.
And once you're invested in three years, do you really think you're going to leave?
Jordi.
Yeah. Yeah.
Uh, this, like, like it has been said, I'm going to go ahead and echo it. It really well presentation, great delivery, clean, concise. And, um, to your point or what you asked about like within our students, I actually overheard, because I was at River City High School today, doing, um, mock interviews, overheard teachers talking about, we need to get a cohort or do something here, kind of like the pathway for teachers for our kids. So I think they're already kind of talking about it. I mean, I don't know who actually said it, but I heard it amongst the teachers and staff.
I will say, I was at mock interviews today. I was a couple of tables over from you and as I'm talking.
You heard it too?
Yeah, well, no, as, as I was, I was there and as I was interviewing the kids, we wrapped up and gave them their scores. I said, you know, by the way, you're eligible to work in Washington Unified soon. So once you're, once you're graduated, call us and there's so many opportunities for you and you have so much to offer. So, um, we're starting the small conversations, but I think we have more work to do.
You may, yeah.
My wondering is perhaps a two-by-two conversation. I've said this before. Home Run has interns, so we should probably be super intentional about what that looks like in terms of exposure. So then they're like, oh, by the way, you interned through Home Run and you got a scholarship? And by the way, you're eligible to be hired. Like, there's a way to wrap it all up with our existing partnerships that make complete sense. The idea of micro-credentling that I know that we're doing with our early child, like, early childhood folks. Like, they just started this year, but the idea of to, to do micro-credentling or concurrent learning with our students right now, like, there you have it. And there, I mean, I'm thinking about my, my, my big fat Greek wedding. I'm like, and there you have it.
That was awesome. So good job.
And I just want to highlight and say that one of the items that we're going to come back in when it comes to the budget is talk about the TOSA position and her position has been so valuable in building that relationship. Actually, you heard that, um, from the participants, how they want to, uh, they feel so proud and want to be part of our, um, our district for the long haul, not just for the three years. It's been, it's actually, credit goes to Jenna for actually connecting with them, helping them, helping them navigate. And so, um, so how do we keep them? That is another piece of how do we keep them? It's very, very important, the relational piece.
All right.
Thank you.
I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, now we're going on to consent agenda. Information consent. I think consent is the one where we, all of them, right? Okay, want to make sure. So do we have a motion?
I move.
Okay, trustee Nagas motion or moved. Fazadi second, VP Fazadi second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, done with that. Action items. P1, approval of the first interim financial report for fiscal year 2023, 2024 with Monique Sobal, Chief Business Officer.
That's good. I, I don't know Rahale. Oh, there she is. I said, 10:30, we got this. We're going to be efficient and thorough, but that was at, that was before 10 o'clock. So, good evening. I know it's late for all of us. I know you all have had a long day. We've had a long day and we have a very important item. So we will be thorough, yet concise with our information. I'm joined as always with our Fiscal Services Director, Billy Duba, to present the first interim budget report. Also, I, I see it in my head as the first quarterly report. Um, so we'll, wait, there should be a clicker here. Okay.
I'll grab it.
There we go. So we'll start with the purpose and overview. Um, tonight's presentation, we actually added a section in it, but we will still meet our timelines and be thorough. So we'll cover our legal requirements, our core messages, our first interim summary, provide, uh, and a California fiscal outlook, which isn't something we typically do, but we feel like it's very important to add to today's presentation. And then as always, talk about our next steps. With the budget, of course, it aligns to every aspect of our strategic plan because we need those financial resources to be able to support our students. And then it also aligns with every part of our strategy map. Always show the budget cycle. Um, we are just about halfway. Always show the budget cycle. We are just about halfway through first interim and then we have a little bit more to go and then we start the cycle again. So the legal requirements of the first interim, just as a reminder, it covers the period from the beginning of the fiscal year in July through October 30th. So lots of things may have happened since that time, but that's, I'm sorry, 31st, that's the time period for the first interim report. It's due on the 15th. We bring it to you for approval, then we send it to the county and then it also goes to the state. Core messages with the first interim, very important to share that we are, we ask for you to approve the budget and certify a positive certification. That means that based upon our projections, we anticipate that we will meet our financial obligations for this year and the subsequent next two years. Our enrollment projection, this is a comparison between the adopted budget and our first interim. Adopted budget is in green, first interim in blue. You'll see that on the charts, there's a difference. And so we are very excited to share that our projections were wrong, which normally you wouldn't do that, but this is pretty exciting because most districts or many districts in California are seeing a pretty steep decline in enrollment and we seem to be steadying out. Even though we're looking at a decrease next year, it's not as significant as we thought at our adopted budget. And so that's pretty exciting for us. But we also want to talk about average daily attendance. We're funded on the number of students who attend school every single day. About 93.1% of our students attend school every day and we heard that earlier this evening. And that means that for the past few years, our funded ADA, the amount that we're actually funded on, is based upon a, the greater of the current year, prior three year, or the prior three year average. Well, the past few years, we were able to bring in COVID and we were able to bring in the ADA when we had a higher enrollment. So we're actually funded in that orange section at a higher amount. But if you look through, through the next years, that difference between the blue and the orange, the blue is our actual ADA, the orange is our funded, is getting smaller and smaller and smaller. Because again, we're funded on the actual number of students that attend school every day. So we need to keep an eye on that. We need to continue to do our attendance campaigns all year long to be able to, one, it's so important that kids come to school, but also to be able to protect the funding so we can support our students. For our Washington Middle College Charter School, we're seeing steady enrollment. About 89% of their students attend school every day and they're funded on the actual ADA. But this time I'm going to pass it over to Billy to talk about the nuts and bolts of the interim.
Good evening. Okay, we're going to start tonight with our unrestricted budget review. Couple of key changes. The revenue changed slightly as a result of the new projected enrollment, some rate changes with the LCFF or Local Control Funding Formula Calculator. Our expense has changed mostly due to the assignment of the ending fund balances that were approved on last year's unaudited actials. When we assigned some of the ending fund balance, we set up the district safety plan or district safety budget and we set up the contributions to the deferred maintenance plan for future facility needs and to our other post employment benefits plan to help benefit costs for our retirees. The numbers for those look like this. Revenues are up 500,000, expenses are up 1.1 million to give us a deficit or a difference from our budget, adopted budget to our first interim budget of 623,000. We're projecting a net decrease to our budget in first interim of 6.2 million. On the restricted side of our budget, a couple of revenue changes. This is when we set up budget for some of the one-time fundings that we didn't fully spend last year and some of the, well, a lot of the COVID dollars that this is the last year rep. So we're setting up the final budget for those. So we set up the revenue for that and the expenses as well as the title programs. As far as those numbers, we're now projecting the restricted side of our budget to decrease by 2.2 million dollars overall. When in the adopted budget, we were predicting $12 million surplus. And that's because we, at that time, we didn't know how much of the SO projects we were going to complete in last year versus what we're going to do this year. Looking at our ending fund balance, on the unrestricted general fund side, at first interim, we are now projecting a ending fund balance of 14.1 million. And that's, that's 6.2 million dollar difference from our beginning fund balance of 20.3 million. Looking at some future years, in 23, 24, our current year, we're showing the ending fund balance of the 14.1 million down at the, the bottom there to give us an ending fund balance percent of 9.2%. And that's above the 3% state requirement and below the 10% cap. In 24, 25 and in 25, 26, we are projecting a 9.4% ending fund balance and an 8.52% ending fund balance. And both of these projections in 24, 25 and 25, 26 were done based on the governor's enacted budget, um, projections on the rates from the enacted budget. Our reserve percent, like I just said, state requirement is 3%. The board has set a minimum of 6%. For the 23, 24 budget, 6% is around 8.8 million. Our current monthly personnel costs are about 8.1 million. So our 6% reserve will cover just about one month of salaries and benefits. And now we're going to talk about the California fiscal outlook.
Thank you, Billy. So as Billy shared, the projections for our multi-year is based upon, or are based upon the governor's enacted budget, which was back in July. And so I want to emphasize that that's an important piece to our first interim report. So looking at the California outlook, the Legislative Analyst Office is a, uh, office that provides a nonpartisan report called the fiscal outlook that provides forecasts of state revenues and expenditures. For us budget people, us finance people, we always look at that report in November to get an idea of what might be coming for next year. So we've already begun planning for next year's budget. The fiscal outlook gives us insights into the anticipated cost of living, potential revenues, expenditures, which we might be able to envision maybe in the governor's budget in January. However, this year's fiscal outlook was delayed for a variety of reasons that we'll talk about in our next slide. We did receive the fiscal outlook last week, last Friday. And here are some of the core messages and takeaways from this fiscal outlook. The first is that California faces a serious deficit. Last year, we already knew that coming into the next few years, that California was facing a deficit, but it's even higher this year than what was projected. We're facing, based upon projections, about a $58 billion deficit for next year, the 24, 25 school year. So we already knew that it would be about a $14 billion. Now we're looking at $58 billion. Next, we're experiencing unprecedented revenue shortfalls. So if we go back and remember taxes are traditionally due in April, but because of the storms last year, they were then due in October. And then it was moved again to literally the day that the LAO puts out their report in November. And so we were not able to have a clear and good picture of what our revenues would be when this year's budget came into effect. So we were basing, or the governor was basing the budget off of projections, when the reality is now showing us that tax revenue is about $26 billion, less than what was projected. If we knew this back in April, then the governor and the legislature may, may have been able to make some changes and some adjustments prior to the current budget, but they didn't. So we are experiencing some really serious decreases in our revenue. But there's hope. So the legislature has many tools to be able to address this budget problem. There may not be so great for us, but the, uh, one of the important things is kind of steadying the ship. Some of those options might be actually decreasing our funding. Some options might be decreasing our one-time funding instead of what's called our Prop 98, which is the major funding for schools. Some may be dipping into the Prop 98 into the reserves to be able to support schools. And then there are some other options that the governor may do and the legislature may do to be able to solve this problem, but we won't know for a while. Because even as the LAO was just getting their data, the governor is just getting his data. So there's going to be a lot of conversations and a lot of hard work between now and even January 10th, when the governor releases his budget and then throughout the year. So what does this mean for us? The LAO, as I shared, projects the cost of living adjustment, the COLA. Currently, the LAO is projecting a 1.27% COLA for next year, very different from the 3.94 COLA that was in the governor's budget. It's important to note, this isn't some crystal ball that I think it's going to be this, I think it's going to be that. It's literally a mathematical formula. So it's not something that we can say, I, I predict this or I predict that. It's a mathematical formula. And so it's very apparent that we are not going to be at a 3.94% COLA. And so districts are advised to truly consider reducing, uh, reduced revenue scenarios in their budget planning, which Billy and I are doing, and exercising prudence when considering additional expenditures to the general fund until we have more data. Again, normally we'd have a lot more data than we have now, but we just don't. And so we need to pay attention to the data. So let's take a look at the potential impact of a decreased COLA. As I shared, Billy and I are looking at several scenarios to be able to bring information to you to help guide us in making decisions. On this slide, you'll see in the first column, the three scenarios that we're looking at. And then what our ending fund balance may be throughout the next few years. So scenario one takes into account what we based the first interim budget on, the 3.94% COLA for the, uh, for next year and then 3.29% COLA for the following year. That was in the governor's budget. And as you see in that first row, we're looking pretty good. And then we took a scenario, what if we have a 1.5, we're being optimistic, 1.5% COLA next year? What might that look like? Of course, this year could be just fine. Next year, we're looking at 7.64, or 7.64%, and then the next year, we're down to 4.7%. What if the COLA doesn't change from 1.27%? Okay, this year, lower the following year and even lower the next. These are the projections and it's time for us to kind of look at that and make some decisions or evaluate our revenues, evaluate our expenditures to make sure that we are able to weather this storm. But I wanted to make a note about COLA. Last year, Billy and I began having conversations with you and our community and our teams about COLA. Many people think that when there's a 3.9% COLA, or even I'm just going to go, there's a 15% COLA, that our revenue is going to increase 15%. But when schools have declining enrollment and especially declining ADA, that means that we are not getting that 15% COLA. We have to take into account the fact that as we shared earlier, we're funded on the number of students that attend school every day. So on this slide, we wanted to share just high level our revenue. So our revenue, the majority comes from the local control of funding formula, LCFF base grant. That LCFF funding is based upon, in totals, the base grant, supplemental grant, concentration. Okay. But right now we're focusing on the base grant. And if we were to apply the next year's projected COLA, 3.94%, we wanted to estimate what would be our true revenue percent increase based upon that 3.9% COLA. So on this slide, the first at the top, we say that 23, 24 base revenue, $95 million. If the 24, 25 total best base revenue is 96 million, and that's based upon a 3.94% COLA, the actual percent increase in revenue is only 1.75%. So we know that a 3.94% COLA, we project revenue increasing less than 2%. If we end up having a COLA that's 1.2 or 1.5, then obviously we're not going to see an increase in our revenue. Billy and I have looked at some numbers and right now we're thinking a 2% COLA may be the minimum COLA we need. So we don't experience a decline in our base funding from LCFF. But we need to keep an eye on it because the governor may decide to do what he did this year when we got an 8.22% COLA and actually add in, fund that with one-time monies to be able to help districts with their revenue. We just don't know what tools they're going to pull out in their toolbox. We'll keep an eye on it. So what's the bottom line? Enrollment in ADA. While enrollment may be leveling out, ADA has not quite returned to the pre-pandemic levels. And we need to keep an eye on that because a lower ADA means less revenue. Next, we've been talking about this for at least a year or two. The economy is softening. We're not seeing that dramatic decline. We're no longer thinking we're going into a recession, but it's still on the downward slope that we all need to keep an eye on. Our COVID funds are expiring. They end September 30th, 2024. And this budget relies very heavily on our COVID monies and expenditures to help us to do great things for our students. And then finally, we really need to continue to evaluate our expenses because again, this budget, we're maintaining all of our services. We're maintaining all of our programs in, that we're currently doing in this budget. However, we need to evaluate what we're doing because we're using one-time monies to be able to continue those programs. Here in California, we're so lucky that we have like the learning recovery block grant, which extends past the COVID money ending so that we can continue these programs while we evaluate where we're going. But we still need to pay attention to the fiscal outlook. So what are our next steps? So this evening, we're asked for your approval of the first interim. Next month, we'll get the governor's budget. We'll analyze the budget and really dig deep as we always do into the budget. And then we'll really monitor and refine our budgets as we always do, keeping in mind the changes that are in our. We always end, as we began, with our budget cycle. So we've finished the first interim. Next month, we are, uh, we plan to bring the audit report and then the governor's budget. And then as always, many thanks to our team. Our fiscal services team have been doing such an amazing job and I'm so lucky to work with them. They've put in hours upon hours of just hard and great work and I want to give a special shout out to the team. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good job. Public comments? Any comments from the board?
Trustee Wong and I were on the budget subcommittee. So we did see this presentation already and trustee Wong also had a lot of insights from her own work and dealings too about what's happening statewide with the budget. I've seen, I believe Governor Newsom just came out with, you know, they have at the state level, some freezes now on, it looks like on some of the general fund things, travel, all of those things. And I think that it's clear that we're going to have to be very prudent with our general fund and really be evaluating what are we spending our general fund dollars, specifically general fund dollars on? specifically general fund dollars on as we move forward? When we were in this place a few years ago, we made some cuts kind of ahead of time to make sure that we were okay in the budget, with our budget. But those were really hard, difficult cuts. They were nothing that we wanted to do. We couldn't keep them all away from the classroom. I mean, they impacted kids. So just that we need to be very prudent and probably be thinking about this with our eyes wide open as we move forward in terms of some of these. It's really unexpected from the state. They're shortfalls. So thank you for the presentation and weaving in, I think, a lot of the feedback that we gave. You did a great job. Talked about and probably more discussions to come.
Super helpful. And I had sent notes from the LAO when my staff had looked at it. And so there's a current year deficit that backfill of $14 billion that we got to figure out. Not that you know right now and officially based on the law, you have to go by July, but do you foresee that impacting any of our current programming?
Our current programming is absolutely impacted. As I shared, here in California, and I say here in California because Billy and I have the opportunity to be in spaces and places with fiscal people and school districts throughout the nation. But we're able to carry those programs with one-time monies. And we really need to get back to not spending one-time money on ongoing expenses. And so as we're reverting back to that, we will need to make some very tough decisions. We will.
So I know, you know, your motto has always been, don't spend one-time monies. So the question is, have we been diligent with that? I think we have been, right? Like, I think we've always heard that and adhered to it by and large, the extent we could. That would mean, you know, do we have to go back and look to pre-COVID times? That was, you know, largely a recession era, deficit era for us and find out where were we then? What were some of the positions and programs that we base funded? We've considered as these are core to us, we will never ever. But then figuring out as we move forward, are we looking at things that we're going to move in order to try?
So to answer your first question about spending one-time monies on things that eat or for ongoing expenses, I've realized that when we say things that eat, you know, it's ongoing expenses. Every district who accepted COVID relief funding spent money on people. Partly because we were told to. Part of that funding was very specifically meant for staffing. And we needed the staff to implement all of the great things that we did for our students and for our staff. And so, no, we have not held the line on not spending our one-time money on our ongoing expenses because we needed to get through the pandemic and we needed to support students and staff. Going forward, we absolutely need to identify our priorities. We need to evaluate what's needed to maintain and support those priorities. And we also need to evaluate what are the great things we implemented during COVID? And what do we need to keep? And now, what have we identified that, you know what, this is a new thing? We can go ahead and replace what we were doing before with this new. Those are going to be some of the hard decisions that we'll need to make. Thankfully, here in our district, which I love, we already are pulling the data. We've already had meetings with E-cabinet and the rest of our cabinet to look at our COVID expenditures, meaning our contracts, our services. Okay, which ones were truly one-time? And we don't need to roll that over next year. What do we see are ongoing and what's the data that supports that? That it supports our strategic plan, that it supports our students? And so our team, we've already been looking at this. We've already been having conversations where we've already been doing that analysis because we want to be a district that continues to be fiscally solvent, fiscally responsible, so that we can avoid being in a situation we were just, what, four or five years ago? Where we had, as Clerk Herbie Gonzalez shared, we had to touch the classroom. And if we can begin making those shifts now, that'll be great for all of us, especially our students.
Yeah, and as it was mentioned, you know, like, there's already been travel restrictions put in the state. I think that's probably something we should, it's kind of an easy no-brainer for us to do. Unfortunately, it's raining generally. But I think those are things that we should automatically start to do. Because you can potentially do virtual, like, a lot of those things are being done. But yeah, I'm just hopeful that we're really cognizant to not touch the classroom as much as possible. Because, you know, we've already heard comments about, you know, staff saying it's almost hard for them to live, right? As well as with health costs going up. No, mine went up 13%. I totally get it. That's an increase that everybody's going to feel, so it's an actual hit. So as I'm hearing about this, right, like, this doesn't look good for the rest of our out and how we go forward. And the last question that I had was, in your hypothetical, we get down to 4.4% ending fund balance. That's below our 6% COLA. So effectively, what you're telling us is, well, about 1.6% we need to find a way to cut, at a minimum?
I'd have to look at the percentage, but either way, if we have a COLA as projected and what I didn't share is in the out year, we were projecting 3% because that's what we're hearing. We need to cut.
Yeah.
We absolutely need to cut.
Yeah.
That's just the foundation.
Any other comments?
Motion by Trustee Wong. Yeah, you could tell I'm tired. And second by Trustee Meneges. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Yeah.
Approval of K, sorry, B, wait, PBK Architects Project Authorization for the Expanded Learning Opportunities Program, ELOP Classroom Editions, Monique Stovall. Welcome back.
Sorry, Rockaway.
Thank you. Rahalee, I tried. It didn't quite get to 10:30. We started at 7:30 at River City, so I like.
I'm an optimist. I'm an optimist, but we're going to keep going. So at last week's special board meeting, thank you. Last week's special board meeting, we had an information item for modular classrooms for our Expanded Learning Opportunities Program. Rahalee shared a great presentation with data information on why we believe that modular classrooms would be best for our students in our ELOP programs. This evening, we are asking your approval for the agreement with PBK Architects, which is the project authorization, so they can begin designing and confirming that where we want to put the modular classrooms would be in a great spot and to help us to bring this project to completion. The financial impact of this agreement would be $340,000 and paid through our ELOP.
Oh, this is the project, yes, the architect is.
So are there any public comments?
I only have one comment is, quit saying modular.
I know.
I know it's just for the architect, but other than that, I will move.
May I just say a quick?
I mean, yeah.
Yeah, I did. Yeah, I changed it in the write-up and I heard modular come out and I'm trying to call it ELOP classroom. So thank you for that reminder.
I left in the middle of discussion, so would love to hear more from others that they have. But, you know, just honestly, hearing from the community and the idea that, one, all due respect, it's hard to spend $3.3 million that's supposed to be enrichment services that should be going, that can be encumbered and spent over the next three years. I will not be voting in support of this just because the idea of expanding and getting more money for ELOP was services enrichment programs at our highest needs schools, right? Specifically, I'm thinking about the North. And I know you guys probably had a wealth and a rich discussion after me, but I think, in my mind, the fidelity of a program like ELOP, they don't want to just call it ELOP, E-L-O-P, was for services enrichment programs that can be encumbered for summer programs over the course of the next couple of years, especially if we're looking at various cuts, so.
And I appreciate that and I think it's an important thing to bring up. We did have a discussion and that went on to many places, including talking about pay and other pieces on that. And for this, given walking the school sites and seeing the classrooms and the need, and we don't have the need in our general fund. And so for that reason, I'm going to, and based on the full conversation, I'm going to give a second, but I think those are important points, so seconded.
Okay. I just say. So move by, moved by, moved by Pizzotti, second by Herbie Gonzalez. All in favor? Or do I do, do we do one by one?
Aye.
All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I also, no. All right, next one. Approval of amendment number two with N-Tech Consulting Group, Inc., also Monique Stovall.
Okay, thank you. This contract is an amendment to a, or I'm sorry, this item is an amendment to a contract approved by you on December 9th, 2022 for testing of hazardous material at our Westfield Village Modernization Project. We also had our first amendment in April to add $8,700 for additional testing for our portables. At this time, we're only asking for an amendment to extend time so they can complete the work that they need to do related to this project.
Any public comments? Any comments from the board?
So moved?
Moved by Trustee Herbie Gonzalez, second by Trustee Wong. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, number four, approval of the agreement between Western Camps, Inc. and Washington Unified School District, Autry Street Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services.
Good evening, everyone. Director Ainsworth and myself are here before you this evening, asking for approval of an outdoor education opportunity for our current eighth graders, students who did not have the opportunity to participate in our customary sixth grade Sly Park trip. Because of the pandemic, we have, they weren't able to go in person. And so this additional opportunity would allow them to experience some much-needed outdoor education time. And that is what our ask is this evening. So are there any questions about that item?
Any public comment? Any questions from the board?
I just have a comment that, this is so exciting. I know that they are going to be so thrilled. But this is a very heavy lift because I'm looking at the timeline we're approving it. And then I'm looking at the timeline you're going. And as somebody who just chaperoned, I know that we have to have our clear chaperones. So I'm sure people are going to be very busy starting tomorrow on this.
Starting tonight.
So when will our families know? Because they are on the docket soon, so.
That's a great question. We're going to send a communication tonight, a site administrator.
Not to parents.
No, yeah, to site administrators, no. To get the next steps as far as parent communication, chaperones, health forms. It is a quick turnaround. And so I think the excitement behind it is going to help because it is a great thing for the students. But we're very aware of the time crunch and we're going to do our very best.
And what a great thing to do for those kids who, my child experienced it virtually. It was not the same. It was not the same. So thank you for doing that. And hopefully, we could have been doing it more, but it's going elsewhere.
I had somebody even in the car the other day and he's like, I never got that trip. And now he's going to and it's like, oh, yes.
So thank you. I move.
Thank you.
I'll second. Moved by Trustee Wong, second by Herbie Gonzalez. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
And now, approval of the agreement between Lux Bus America and Washington Unified School District for the overnight field trip that we just approved to Wonder Valley Outdoor Education Center, Autry.
Yes, and I just want to point out that we did consult with our transportation department, who unfortunately, because of capacity, was not able to accommodate this request. And so we had to seek the services of an external vendor. And so we're asking for the approval to, of the transportation contract so that our kids can get to and from the camp safely.
Any public comments? Right, any comments from the board?
Quick question. Is it that we don't have staff capacity to take them? Or is it that our buses won't make?
Staff capacity.
Because I know we had problems with Sly Park.
This is actually, it's at Sanger, so we're going. Yeah, it's further away. We're sending four schools at a time, so it's a much larger lift.
But just because it's past 11 and we'll probably go to midnight tonight and I'm feeling spicy. So what would happen if we just approved you to pay for the thing?
They're walking. They can start right now.
They can start running tonight. That's the call. So you're going to hike as part of this. Okay. I move.
I second.
Okay, moved by Trustee Wong, second by Trustee, oh, yeah. I was going to just say, Pizzotti. All in favor?
Aye.
And now, next one. You're welcome. Approval of four Elkhorn certified staff members to attend the Innovation School Summit Out of State Conference from February 28th, 2024 to March 2nd, 2024.
So I'm joined tonight by
You should probably bring.
the last woman standing, Director Stephanie Groot. And she will take the lead on this next action item, which is a request to send additional staff to the Innovative School Summit Conference taking place in March. So go ahead.
Good evening, and I apologize, I'm a little stuffy. So our first agenda item is for Elkhorn staff to attend the Innovative School Summit. I have, excuse me, information from Principal Gutierrez, who shares that staff attending the conference will share information with other staff during site meetings. There will be teachers going from all different grade bands so that they can come back and share. And the sessions of interest include supporting school climate, building system of supports for students, and trauma-informed care.
All right, any public comments? Comments from the board?
Monique probably shouldn't have come up here and scared us all to death with her rosy projections.
That's okay.
And because this is out of. And, and because this is out of state, right? In my first comment, it was, hey, maybe we should put a kibosh on out-of-state travel, right? So even if it is for training. Now, I'm, I'm going to hold that to the next thing that we look in, not this next, but.
I'm on the different, same thing, different schools.
Going forward, right, like.
Can I? I can, I can address that within the Elkhorn SIPSA, which you previously approved. These were funds that are dedicated for professional development. So this is part of their school plan that addresses their school goals. So this professional development is part of that.
Is it, okay, but it's part of money that's already been budgeted, right?
Correct.
So we've already budgeted.
For professional development.
Right, but it's still, if we didn't, I'm just going out. If we didn't utilize it, then does it remain in our general?
These are funds that were allocated directly to Elkhorn. Elkhorn is using their Title I funds to address the specific needs of those students. So those funds actually will not carry over.
Title two, it's public.
And that will not be part of the general fund. Because this one's Title I.
That's clarifying.
It's a federal dollar. And, and even in a tight budget, I don't, I see this actually supporting the classroom. And we shouldn't ask teachers to do more with less. So even, even with that, I would continue to support because this is what our teachers and our administrators are asking for in terms of professional development. So I'm supportive and thank you for bringing it.
Thank you.
I move.
I second. Okay, moved by trustee, sorry, I know it's VP, VP Pazadi, trustee, thanks. And then trustee Wong, second. And all in favor?
Aye.
Do you want to interrupt me again or do you just want me to go for the sake of time? Good evening. Our next item is for the approval of.
Ditto.
I want to address your comment. The funding associated with this is for, Westfield is using CSI funds. So it's comprehensive school improvement funds that is specific to build capacity at the school site. So those are the funds. Those funds also do not carry over. They are for specific uses and what directly tied to the Innovative Schools Conference.
Any public comments? Public comments?
You have to find somebody else to pay for it. I do. All the time.
Any, okay, no comments from the board. We're moving.
I move, second.
Trustee. Vanegas, moved. Uh, trustee Wong, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Good. We're done with that piece. Thank you. With our action items. Yay. I think we said we were going to try and forego our governance.
We're going to. Our board and superintendent comments.
Board and superintendent comments.
Close session.
So we're going to go back into closed session to, and then we will come back as soon as we have completed.
To our future, will you call for future agenda items?
Okay, just call for that. Future board agenda items, the special board meeting, board budget study session, January twenty twenty-four. An update on Washington Unified's Virtual Academy, UVA, January twenty twenty-four. Second interim budget report expected March twenty twenty-four. And so now we go into closed session.
Well, I have a, a future agenda item.
Oh, what's a future?
That I wanted to add, and it might be that when we look at the handbook, it might be tied in hand in hand with the handbook. But that we have something maybe with, with our legal counsel on agenda setting in terms of consent, action discussion. So we're all on the same page in terms of what that looks like and just make sure that we have a process that's clear. And I'm thinking it goes with the handbook because that might be what we'll put in the handbook as well, if it fits there. So.
Right, so handbook, agenda items, action versus consent, right?
We can just say agenda setting, maybe.
Okay. Okay. And now we are going into closed session? And then do I just close, do I end it from there? Okay, okay. Oh, yeah, that's right. I got a report. Okay, we're going into close.